It's like the, it's like the East Room when the cat, or in the White House.
Yep.
It says, hello?
Hello?
Nothing, huh? Can you hear me? The speakerphone.
Hello?
Hello? Nope, nothing.
I don't think eight o'clock's gonna work.
There you go. There you go. Greg's mic is on.
Testing.
Hello? Yeah, got it. All right. That's better than not enough, yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on December 21st, 2017. Thank you. Let's begin with roll call.
Field Captain Alley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here. Yep.
I am here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Here.
Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
Commissioner Yearsley?
Here.
Absent, Commissioner Burnt, and Commissioner Perrow.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We have one item that is, will be changed. It's H-2017-0142, Summertown subdivision. Will be opened only for the purpose of continuing the item to the regularly scheduled date of January 4th. It will be open solely for that purpose, so if there's anybody here tonight to testify on that particular application, we will not be taking testimony today. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we just have the one item on the consent agenda to approve the minutes of December 7th.
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to briefly explain the public hearing process for this evening. We will open each item individually and then start with the staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and uniform development code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open the public testimony. There is a sign-up sheet in the back as you entered for anyone wishing to testify. Any person testifying will come forward to the microphones and be allowed three minutes. And you'll notice there is a timer on the screen, so you'll be able to keep track of your time. If they're speaking for a larger group, like an HOA, and there's a show of hands to represent the group, they will be given up to 10 minutes. After all testimony has been heard, and the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to have the opportunity to come back and respond if they desire. After that, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make a recommendation to city council. So at this time, I'd like to open H-2017-0142, Summertown subdivision, to be continued to January 4th. And they are requesting the continuance in order to have the preliminary plat application catch up to the annexation application.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
Before we do a vote, can we just make sure for the record that Commissioner Perrow has arrived?
Yep.
So we can make sure when she votes, she's noted.
We actually count her vote.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. For the record, Commissioner Perrow has entered the room.
And with that, I would make a motion to continue file number H-2017-0142 to the hearing date of January 4th, 2018.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to continue item H-2017-0142, Summertown subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, we'd like to continue H-2017-0095, Linder mixed use, and we will begin with the staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. The first application before you tonight was heard by the commission on October 19th. It was continued at that meeting in order for the applicant to revise their plans. The commission voted to continue the project to a subsequent meeting in order for the applicant to revise their development plans to remove the multifamily residential component of the plan. In lieu of multifamily, the commission suggested other uses such as townhomes, mixed commercial, and/or office uses. The applicant submitted a revised development plan as requested. Staff report has been updated accordingly, and the project has been re-noticed. The original concept plan is shown there on the right, and the new revised proposed concept plan is shown on the, excuse me, I said right, I meant left, and the new one is on the right. The original application included a request for a rezone of the two properties just to the south of this. Since the last commission hearing, the applicant has withdrawn that portion of their request. The application before you tonight is just a request for annexation and zoning. This site consists of eight acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located, ye, I'm not sure which of these addresses it was, I believe it was, well, 5940 or 5960 North Linder Road. I still have that on there from the last application. Adjacent land uses and zoning to the north is vacant undeveloped properties owned RUT in Ada County. It is the proposed Linder Village Commercial Mixed Use Development property that you guys have already heard. To the east are single-family residential homes in Paramount subdivisions owned R8. To the south is residential agricultural property and a church owned LO. And to the west is North Linder Road and single-family residential homes in Lockshaw Falls subdivision owned R4. Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation for this property is mixed-use community. The applicant proposes to annex and zone five acres of land with a CC zoning district. A conceptual development plan was submitted, as shown, that depicts two pad sites that are a little less than an acre each, fronting North Linder Road. A north-south driveway and a 7,000 and a 10,000 square foot building with an outdoor plaza area between the two with associated parking is proposed on the east side of the site. The applicant does have a potential tenant that would like to develop a dance studio and event center for dance recitals and performances on the rear three-acre portion of the site. That is this area right back here. Direct access via North Linder Road is not proposed. However, if in the future, when the site develops, if access is not available via the north-south Backage Road paralleling Linder Road, an access via Linder may be needed. In this case, staff recommends it would be a temporary access until such time as access is available from the properties to the north and south. At that time, the access would be removed unless otherwise approved by the commission and city council. Cross-access ingress egress easement is required to be provided to the properties to the north and south for access to the site and interconnectivity between the properties. There are no pedestrian walkways depicted on the concept plan along the north-south Backage Road that separates the commercial uses from the arts and entertainment uses. Staff is recommending a walkway is provided on one side of the driveway for safe pedestrian access and interconnectivity. Conceptual building elevations have been submitted for the commercial structures that front on North Linder Road. Those are shown on the left there, consisting of one-story structures with stucco horizontal siding and brick-stone veneer accents. And the event center proposed to be at least two-story structure, constructed of CMU block on the right. All structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. Written testimony submitted on this application prior to the last commission hearing. Trevor Gasser, the applicant, response to the staff report, Justin Carpenter, Jeremy Evans, Cara Gallegos, Sally Reynolds, had a petition signed by adjacent homeowners opposing the development. And then there was only one letter submitted since the last commission hearing, and that was from Wendy McKinney in favor of the new revised design. Staff is recommending approval with the revised concept plan with the requirement of a development agreement containing the provisions in Exhibit B of the staff report.
Staff, stand by questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Trevor Gasser, 824 North McHitrick, Farmington, Utah, 84025. Madam Chair, commissioners, thanks for hearing me again. At the last meeting, as Sonia pointed out, the comments back were multifamily is needed in Meridian, but not at this location. And you felt otherwise that I should remove the multifamily along with the residents since I've had a time to review the project, see how I can make it work. I am under contract with this new tenant for the back parcel here to do a dance studio and event center for their recitals and performances. They are a local company. They've been in business for a long time, and I think it would be a compliment to the community. I had a neighborhood meeting, and I had good support at that meeting. I didn't have anybody there giving me negative feedback, and so I've really tried hard to listen to them and to you and come up with this new plan. I am currently negotiating on the south portion here, on that 1.483 acre parcel with the preschool slash daycare that would take that front portion, and then I would develop office in the back to give it that mixed-use feel. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just, some questions about the access. Are you in agreement with staff on everything that's in the report in Exhibit B? Or tell me a little bit about the plan for the access.
My only question on that would be if, you know, if this portion on the south side never got developed, I would like to have access off of Linder, and maybe, I don't know if I had an agreement with the property owner to the south to do a common access in the middle there, but if, you know, I look down at the property to the south on McMillan and Linder, and they have three or four access points within 250 feet of each other, and both of these properties are 300 feet wide, and so that is one thing that I would, you know, for my commercial tenants, it's imperative to have good access. If I take access down here off of Linder on the LO site, then I'm fine, but, and depending on what happens with the village, I don't know what's gonna happen with their plan in the future too, so I would just need some sort of access off the front.
So how far out do you think you are to get the rest of that developed, the daycare and the office?
We're close. I mean, I've signed an LOI with the tenant, but it's the holidays, and deals don't go through as fast as you'd like them to with the holidays, so I'm hoping, you know, sometime in January.
So what's pictured here is pretty much what we should expect?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take public testimony. I have several names on the sheet here, but nobody that says that they're wishing to testify. Is there anyone here that would like to testify on this application? Certainly, come forward. As you approach the mic, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sally Reynolds. I live at 1166 West Bacall Street, Meridian, Idaho, and I'm gonna be speaking, I'm reading a letter first from my husband Gregory Reynolds. He testified against the plan previously, and he couldn't be here due to a work commitment, so I'm gonna read his letter, if that's okay. Dear Madam Commissioner and commission members, I apologize for not being able to attend this hearing in person due to an unexpected work commitment, but since I brought up some concerns in the previous hearing, I wanted to make sure you knew that they have been resolved. Mr. Gasser and TMEG have been receptive to the concerns that were raised, and I applaud their efforts to work with residents to come together on a proposal that provides benefits to the community without additional strain on the local infrastructure. I urge the commission to approve this new proposal. On a related note, with all the focus right now on redrawing school attendance boundaries due to overcrowding, I hope Meridian city officials will recognize that these small parcels of land can have a large impact on things that are further than 300 feet away, especially if we're talking about high-density housing. The question can't be whether or not the city needs more apartments, but whether the placements of them will be a burden on the nearby schools or other public utilities. For example, at some point, the small property owners on the east side of Paramount will decide to sell off their land, and what gets built there will be just as important as what's proposed tonight. I know the commission understands this, and I would ask that it be a topic of discussion at the city council level throughout the next year. Apologies again for not being present tonight. Thank you for your service to Meridian. Greg Reynolds. And I just wanted to add my own personal note. My sincerest thanks to you for encouraging the developer to continue to work at looking different options for this land, and my genuine thanks to Mr. Gasser for being, he has been a genuine delight to work with, and he has kept us in the loop, and he has gone above and beyond just what the city has required of him. This outcome is an excellent example of how residents and developers can come together to find a mutually beneficial plan that all parties are in favor of. Many of the Paramount residents are excited to see this land developed into businesses that will enhance our community, serve our children, and increase the convenience for parents who currently go far to drop children off to school or dance class. And I sent Mr. Gasser this, and here's just some comments from residents that I received when I sent out the new plan. Quote, "This is great news and an excellent example of what could be if Linder Village developers were actually willing to listen and work with residents." Another one, "Love this plan, great fit for the community." Thank you, Mr. Gasser. Another one, "We're very happy with the new plan Trevor has put forth. I think it will be an asset to the community." Another one, "Love Gasser's plan, thank you for sharing it." Another one, "That is great, and we like it." And last one, "We think this builder has done a wonderful job of finding what fits for the comprehensive plan as well as fitting for the neighborhood." Our hats off to Trevor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gasser, do you have anything else you'd like to? That's a good closing for you? All right. All right. At this time, could I get a motion to close the public hearing for item H-2017-0095, Linder mixed use?
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for item number H-2017-0095. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Yearsley.
You know, I was not here to hear the first application, and so I don't know what was said or what was discussed, but I thoroughly like the new proposed plan. I think, like was said, it will enhance the area, providing resources for kids and stuff. The only concern, and it's not enough for an objection at this point because there's not enough to know, we've seen it before in the past with the preschool, day school. Getting kids in and out in a timely manner without traffic might be an issue that we want to look at, but just, just as a reference, but I think for the most part, I think it's a good plan.
I agree. It's night and day from what we looked at last time, and what a great use for the community, and like I said, I'm sure it'll get a ton of use.
I would agree. I was definitely not in favor of the last one. I think I was the one that most woke, I don't know. And I, you know, I couldn't ask for a better revision in what came back, and I commend you for working with the neighbors, and I think it's gonna be a great buffer between the homes in Paramount, Linder Road, and what's already there to the south. And I would echo Commissioner Yearsley's statement about the drop-off pickup and probably something to work with if they do come onboard and make sure that's drawn out the best it can be.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. I apologize if I missed this. Staff recommending that there's a walkway that goes from the event center here in the east to the properties to the west? Is that what, when it says staff recommends a walkway is provided on one side of the driveway for safe pedestrian access?
Madam Chair, Chairman Perrow, the walkway along this north-south driveway right here.
Okay, so as far as if somebody wanted to walk from the east side to the west side, are they just gonna walk along through the parking lot?
I did not include a requirement, I don't believe, in the staff report, but it would be nice to have a pathway from this sidewalk if it's on the right-hand side through to the entrance.
Okay. So I noticed there was one on the prior plan.
Certainly add to the development agreement provisions. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to city council of file number H-2017-0129 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of December 21st, 2017.
Seconded.
Are we making any revisions based on what Commissioner Perrow just mentioned? Are we adding that condition? That's not in the staff report.
That's not in the staff report.
So they're talking about a drive, so she's talking about one going this way?
Discuss that, maybe. I don't know. Well, I don't know. I didn't know, I didn't know we had to include in that.
Well, from my understanding, I think the pathway in the staff report is actually along the roadway.
It is.
And not to the...
So we just want to add the condition of connecting that.
East-west.
Yeah.
Director across the parking lot.
Okay.
And I think it's item number H-2017-0095.
Yeah. I'm reading the, okay. Let's do it again. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to city council of file number H-2017-0095 with the following modification, that we include an east-west pathway to the entrance.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve item number H-2017-0095, Linder mixed use with the aforementioned comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing for item number H-2017-0140, Timberline subdivision, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Good, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Just to start out, I happen to have...
Mr. Wilson.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of the City Council of File Number H-2017-0129 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of December 21st, 2017.
Second.
Are we making any revisions based on what Commissioner Perot just mentioned? Are we adding that condition? That's not in the staff.
That's not in the staff report.
So they're talking about a dry, uh, so she's talking about one going this way?
Discuss that maybe, I don't know, I don't know. I didn't know, I didn't know we had to include.
Well, from my understanding, I think the pathway in the, in the staff report is actually along the roadway.
It is.
And, and not to the.
So we just wanna add the condition of the connecting that.
Director across the parking lot.
Okay.
And I think it's item number H-2017-0095.
Yeah, I'm reading the, okay, let's do it again. "After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of City Council of File Number H-2017-0095 with the following modification, that we include an east-west pathway to the, to the entrance."
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve item number H-2017-0095, Linder Mixed Use, with the aforementioned comments. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open the public hearing for item number H-2017-0140, Timberline Subdivision, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Good, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Just, just to start out, I, I happened to have the hiccups this evening, so. Apologize in advance if there's some odd noises coming in this direction.
Alrighty.
Holding my breath for a while, so hopefully they're gone. So tonight, this is the Timberline Subdivision, uh, is an application for a preliminary plat. Site consists of approximately 17.3 acres of land, which is currently zoned R8. It's located at 655 and 735 West Victory Road. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north are single-family homes in the Bear Creek subdivision, which is also zoned R8. Excuse me, I think they're zoned R4. Uh, to the east are rural residential property, which is zoned R8. To the south are single-family residential properties in the Kentucky Ridge Estates subdivision and Biltmore Estates, which is zoned R4. To the west are single-family residential properties also in Kentucky Ridge, also zoned R4. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is a medium-density residential. The proposed plat consists of 58 building lots, seven common lots, um, on 17.3 acres of land in the R8 zoning district. The gross density for the subdivision is 3.41 dwelling units per acre. Average lot size is 8,490 square feet. All of the proposed lots comply with the dimension standards of the UDC. There is an existing recorded development agreement for the subject property that requires all of the lots that are bought up to the Kentucky Ridge Estates subdivision to be 10,000 square feet in, in size, uh, at, at a minimum, uh, which includes all of the lots, and they all do comply. There are several existing structures on the site that will be demolished as part of the project. The phasing plan, as presented by the applicant, indicates the first phase of the development will come from the south. The second phase will include the Victory Road frontage in effort to ensure that pedestrian connectivity in the area occurs sooner rather than later. Staff is recommending that the applicant, uh, construct the landscape buffer and sidewalk along West Victory Road with what is their first phase. So you can see here on the, on the plan, south on this diagram is to the left, so, um, excuse me, north is to the left, south would be to the right. So the first phase would be connecting to the Biltmore Estates subdivision in this location, and then Victory Road runs up and down right here, which is, uh, the connection at this point. Typically, the, the City Council has been asking for, uh, subdivisions that are within, uh, relatively close distance to a school. To, uh, at a minimum, put in a sidewalk along the frontage to accommodate the pedestrian students getting to school. This is relatively close to a school on Stoddard, so our, our request, with this not being an annexation, staff can't technically require the applicant, because, uh, we can typically, typically do that with an annexation, but with a preliminary plat, we don't have the ability to do that. But we are recommending that that is something that, uh, is looked at, that at, at a minimum, a sidewalk be, be installed along the frontage. Moving on, access is proposed for the site via one access to Victory, as I mentioned, and a stub street to the south, uh, or South Bearclaw Avenue. The applicant is proposing two additional stub streets to the parcel to the east that will connect to future development. There are several lots that are encumbered by an existing easement. Any existing utility mains crossing the property that are no longer in use or needed must be abandoned, and any associated easements will need to be released or relinquished. As you can see here in this location, there is an existing easement that is no longer being used. We've asked the applicant as part of that, as a condition in the staff report, that that be relinquished prior to a final plat being approved. A, a minimum of 10% of qualified open space is the standard requirement for subdivisions for the UDC. Based on the size of the plat, of the plat, which is 17.3 acres, a minimum of 1.73 acres of qualified open space is required. The applicant, um, has revised their preliminary plat recently, and we have not yet received an updated revised landscape plan that I can analyze to, to ensure the 10% requirement. Staff has conditioned the applicant to provide that landscape plan prior to City Council to ensure that the amenities and the 10% open space threshold are, are met. Based on the air of the plat, the annexation, excuse me, two qualified open space, two qualified amenities are, are required. The applicant is also requesting that, um, city's domestic water be used as irrigation. The applicant has not provided a waiver of requirement from the irrigation district as proof that they do not have the water rights. Use of the city's domestic water as irrigation should be a last option in providing irrigation water to the proposed development. So the applicant will have to provide something from the irrigation district indicating that they do not have water rights or the capacity to serve the development. Building elevations are shown here, there's conceptual elevations. The applicant is proposing to construct single-family detached homes. The applicant has submitted conceptual sample building elevations for future homes. The building materials appear to consist of a variety of wood siding, cultured stone, and/or masonry with architectural shingles. The staff is recommending approval of the application, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Penelope Riley, Post Office Box 405, Boise, Idaho 83701. I'm here representing obviously the applicant and project team for Timberline Subdivision. Project team and the applicant have reviewed the staff report and concur with the exception of the requirement for street improvements on Victory Road. And I'd like to cover that a little later in my presentation. The project engineer is available this evening for any questions you have regarding engineering. We've had two neighborhood meetings. The first, we had a flawed neighborhood meeting list from the Land Records Office, so we hosted a second meeting, and that one complied with the city's standards. The project team has been corresponding with the neighborhood. I had a nice list of email addresses, and we forwarded information to them over the course of the application processing period. The, the project is two phases, as Josh has mentioned, and, uh, generally splits the site in two. A landscape plan will be prepared and updated, uh, in time for the City Council meeting. The lots adjacent to Kentucky Ridge will be 10,000 square feet as required by the previously recorded development agreement, and the remainder of the lots are in compliance with the city code. With regard to the vacation of easements, we've submitted a legal description and exhibits to the city of Meridian, so that vacation is in process as far as I'm aware. Common areas for the subdivision will be a minimum of 10, 10%, as required by city code. And the irrigation waiver, um, the project engineer is working on that now, so, uh, it's in process. With regard to Victory Road, and Josh, if you would put up that illustration I gave you. Thank you. Uh, we're requesting that the improvements on Victory Road be constructed with Phase Two. There's a 300-foot separation between Phase One and Phase Two, um, directly north. In other words, Victory Road is at least 300 feet away from the northern boundary of Phase One, so it's quite a distance. Yes, you can see on this illustration, and I, my highlighting is a little bit sloppy, but there's a full sidewalk available on the north side of Victory Road, and it traverses from Stoddard all the way to Meridian Road. So there's full pedestrian facilities available at present. I'm assuming that bus stops, uh, as they're currently laid out now, are to the west where Kentucky Ridge and Kentucky Estates access Victory Road, or, um, for all the residences on the north side of Victory Road. So it's unlikely that we have a bus stop on the south side adjacent to our site at this time. The sidewalk would obviously dead-end on the east side of the site, um, because that's where they would run into the canal. And, um, again, we have full pedestrian facilities available on the north side of the street. Residents in Phase One would not be able to easily access Victory Road from, from Phase One. They'd have to either go south through Biltmore, or go east and south through, uh, Kentucky Ridge and Kentucky Estates to get, um, to walk up to Victory Road. So those pedestrian facilities are in place now. The developer plans to move forward quickly with Phase Two, so there would be a minimal delay in the construction of the Victory Road improvements at any, at any, regardless of whether or not they're done with this phase or the next. There won't be much of a delay. So in closing, uh, we, we do request that the conditions of approval be modified so that the street improvements along the site of Phase Two, portion of the site, be constructed with Phase Two. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
So the piece in front of Consta, Con, Kentucky Ridge, did that get sidewalks included? Or, or do you know if there's sidewalks already on front of the Kentucky Ridge?
I believe so, on the streets.
Yes, on Victory Road. Adjacent to yours, so would you be connecting to existing sidewalk, um, to the, to the west?
There's a develop in between us, our site, the Phase Two portion of our site, and Kentucky Ridge. They, they still have to traverse another development site, um, before they can get to, um, the Kentucky Ridge access point.
So there's nothing there right now to connect that sidewalk to?
Well, it looks like it's in, it's been constructed. This is maybe.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Recent map.
Madam Chair.
No, I take that back. It doesn't look like it has been constructed yet.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Josh, that, that's Kentucky Villas, right, or is that what it's called? The paint, or a chunk of the paint that's already got addresses? So is that all done? Is it developed out? Or is that just a plat? Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Yes, that is a subdivision that's in process, and that sidewalk was required as part of that development. It's just not constructed. It's, they have surety for that improvement, so if the weather breaks and we get out of winter, we do anticipate a sidewalk along that street frontage. And Josh, you mentioned there's a, like, the connect, connection to schools concept. Is there, where's a school near here, so that we understand that?
So, uh, this is a subject property here, so the, the boundary line is about right there, splits the intersection there. This is the Kentucky Villas, and this is their project here. North on Stoddard is where the school is, so I'll scroll up here, you can see. This is, this is the school here, so it's, it's fairly close by. Zoom out a little bit, and you can see how close that is.
And to the east, where you're scrolling, those are like giant retention ponds, is that, what are those? They, it looks like they're dry in this picture, but is the.
This area where my mouse is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's property that, uh, it's not, it's not necessarily a retention pond, there's just been water in there.
Okay.
So, um, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
Would you, uh, be willing to, uh, at least at a minimum, construct your sidewalk at least to the east side of Stoddard? If not all the way through?
So, oh, you mean along our west property line?
Yes, uh, at least so, 'cause right now, the, the, the property to the east is actually, has a sidewalk to your property line, but it doesn't get to the east side of, of Victory Road, that you could actually put a crosswalk in to go to the north.
Oh, so you're asking if we would extend the sidewalk so that it was on the other side of where Stoddard is?
Right, so you're, uh, well, you're asking for a waiver from not doing the landscaping in the front as an alternative. And, and we'd have to discuss this, but I wanted to get your opinion. Would you be willing to at least go to the other side of the street so we could have some sort of a crosswalk so they can get safely to another sidewalk to walk to school?
Uh, that seems very reasonable. Yes, I believe that would be acceptable. I was just looking at the engineer, sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll take public testimony. I have one person signed up, Dustin Hilgert. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dustin Hilgert, 490 West Tall Prairie Drive, Meridian, Idaho 83642. Sorry, I'm a little bit tall.
Yeah.
Dustin Hilgert, 490 West Tall Prairie Drive, Meridian, Idaho 83642.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys' time tonight. I'll make it as quick as I can. I'm up here talking about this subdivision. I live in a, adjacent subdivision, the Biltmore Estates. Knowing that this is already zoned residential, so there's not a whole lot we might have to say. But there is about 20 houses that are built up. We're kinda on a bluff. And we have this subdivision being put in that is given, in our opinion, most people are out of town because of the holidays, so they're not here. No, there's no thought process into what that's gonna do to our houses and our views and, and everything else. I mean, everything's stacked right up on us, so I'm gonna come in my backyard here, and I'm just gonna be hanging out with my, my neighbor, because they're just, everything's right there. And I know it's already zoned residential, but we've had to, we've tried to have this conversation with the developer, and essentially we've been told, well, the only thing you can do about what we do with the houses we put in here is buy the, the property, because we're gonna do whatever we kinda want, which upsets us, because that's the whole point of having a planning and zoning committee and requiring people to submit drawings and preliminary plats. So, and if you go through their, their actual application, I mean, the drawings of the houses that are in there are over, or the, the photos, those are houses that are over 20 years old. They're not even houses that would be built right now. Uh, we were given some subdivisions of similar houses that they might put in this subdivision, and they, you know, good Tuscany, Paramount, all the nicer subdivisions in Meridian, which is great, but how come the application didn't have anything like that? I mean, they have, they reference wood garage doors in like three different spots in the application. I'd challenge anybody to find an actual wood garage door on any house in the city of Meridian right now. My point with that is, is we don't wanna stifle growth, and I'm a taxpayer. I mean, I, I want more tax base. I wanna be able to have the amenities in Meridian. I've been here for over a decade. But we can't just let anybody come in and just throw something together, and hey, here we go. We're on to the next subdivision. We're just gonna forget about everybody that, that is already actually paying taxes to the city. And that's my big concern. And then another one is, they just brought up is access from Victory. So now you're not gonna have a road for Phase One from Victory, so people are gonna actually have to drive in through three subdivisions, go right through one road in. They're gonna drive by 60 houses to build all those houses. I, I don't understand that. And the, the irrigation's the same thing. I don't know why they wouldn't have irrigation. The farmer that's been there watering those fields for his sheep is using irrigation. So if they didn't sell the water rights with the property, now whose taxes are gonna pay for more water to get filtered and treated to go to people doing their landscaping? I mean, it's, I just don't think there's been a lot of thought put into this.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up on the sheet, but is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this application? Would the applicant like to come back?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, would you like me to give you my name again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Penelope Riley, Box 405, Boise, Idaho 83701. Development is always, uh, new development is always difficult, and, um, we are sensitive to the fact that the individuals who live to the south of us have had extraordinarily nice views up to now. Unfortunately, someone else's view was damaged when their subdivision went in, and it, it's a domino thing that, that there isn't any easy answer for, really. There's two lots that will be, um, aligned east to west at the very bottom of the subdivision, so. And there is an elevation difference between the houses beha, to the south of us and the new homes that would be constructed in Phase One of Timberline. So I, I don't know what I can say with regard to that. We don't know for sure that their views will be destroyed. It just depends on what home is built on what lot, but, um, again, there's an elevation difference, and they are up on a bluff, so, um, there is some, uh, some opportunity for them to retain some portions of their view in the worst-case scenario. The, the architectural, uh, images that I submitted with the application were provided to me by the applicant, Bailey Investments. And I, I guess I would just have to say regarding architectural elements, there's a. there's a, there's a pretty consistent theme of home types and sizes and footprints that exist in the general vicinity of the subdivision. Varying very far from that as a developer and as a builder would be dangerous because then you have a lack of consistency. People like to have homes that are somewhat similar. So, my thought is that there won't be a big variation between the homes that are there now and the new homes that will be constructed. With regard to irrigation, like I said earlier, the engineer's working on that. I know he's inquired into the irrigation district to see how much water rights we do have with the site. It may be insufficient to supply all the homes that would be constructed. The engineer is here and perhaps he can address that item for you. And finally, your question, sir, about the sidewalk. My understanding is it's already stubbed to our property line on the west side. So, it might already be in place what you were looking for in regards to sidewalk to what would be the south side of the east side of the intersection of Victory and Stoddard. If I'm understanding you correctly, Commissioner.
No, because they've only built it to their property line. Your property line is in the middle of the roadway. I want to go to the east side of that intersection so we can have a crosswalk to a safe sidewalk on the other side of the street. That's what my thought was.
Madam Chairman, I understand. It seems like a very reasonable request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I was going to bring up the irrigation. Is it just not enough water or not enough water at one time? Could they put a pond in to use for adequate irrigation to, for storage?
Obviously, that's a possibility and I'll let the engineer discuss that. I think at this time, we don't have a clear number on how many feet of water we have. So, there's no sense in using domestic water if there's sufficient irrigation water, absolutely.
Yeah, Commissioner Cassinelli.
Sorry about that. The, what are there for proposed common areas and amenities right now? That was, it looks like those aren't in there yet, is it?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner. I believe we have, we originally had three common lots distributed across the site to provide amenities. One of them would have just been the grassy open space that's listed in the Meridian Code as being one of the amenities. And then my understanding was a kind of a community picnic area with a covered, covered area and barbecues, that kind of thing, picnic tables.
And a follow-up question on that. Somebody was looking at, when I was reviewing this earlier, was it, it looked like some of that open space, I couldn't tell, was that at the entrance to the subdivision? Is that where those fell?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, we've relocated the common areas with an updated site plan that we haven't submitted yet. And they're, they're off of Victory Road, so they're not immediately adjacent to any high-traffic roads. And we did, as an afterthought, we did try to distribute them across the site so that it is an unusual shape, the development site. So, we did try to distribute the open space common lots so that they were equally distributed.
Commissioner Cassinelli, if I could just quickly, the, we've kind of called them out, things that we would, had noticed on the plat that there are, at least the number and the location of the common lots. So, I can kind of show you generally where those are if that's what you're interested in finding out exactly the location of those. So, one of those is down here at the, would be the far, the far-right side. If I can turn on annotation here, maybe? Oh, looking at the wrong thing. Let me switch the screen so you can see what I'm saying. Okay, that's better. So, the temporary turnaround located here where my mouse is, that's one of the open space lots. Second one is in this location here. A third one is this location here next to Victory. There is another in this location here. I believe those are the four. Correct me if I'm wrong, Penelope, but I think those are the-
I think that's correct.
Those are the four common lots.
So, Josh, so what I'm understanding is one of the common lots or amenities is going to be a temporary turnaround until someone develops in the future?
Madam Chairman, may I address that?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner, I think we have more than we need in terms of that area. And I agree that a turnaround in that location for a temporary period of time is kind of wonky, but eventually it will be converted to a full open space area, so.
And who's responsible for that? Is that-
That would be the HOA.
To get rid of the turnaround and put that in?
Well, it depends, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. It depends on when the property to the east of us develops because we're stubbing to that elongated triangle area that has been ponds and is now dry. The property owner did come to the neighborhood meeting, Mr. Bish, and he indicated he was interested in doing some development in the future, but I have no more information than that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Are you, and staff, or Penelope, you can answer this. Are you bonding for that so that we have assurance that it gets built? Is that something you guys are putting surety up for?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, are you asking me if we would bond to, for the removal of the turnaround?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's certainly an option.
I think that's a lot to leave for the HOA in that small of a subdivision.
I will also mention that it's not atypical that there is a lot that is a non-build lot until such time as the road goes through. We don't see a lot of times where they're trying to use a common lot for that. Typically, it's more of an incentive for the builder, if it's on a buildable lot, to get their subdivision finished and get going. That way that open space isn't kind of held that would otherwise be used for the subdivision that would be in a temporary turnaround or covered in asphalt until who knows when. So, this is something else to keep in mind. I mean, there's different things that they could do, but staff didn't require that they, again, I haven't seen a landscape plan, so I don't know exactly how much open space they have for the development, whether or not it. I'm reluctant to say staff is comfortable with a large portion of the open space being held in this temporary turnaround for who knows how long, right? Without knowing exactly how much open space they have for the development, I'm a little bit leery of allowing a large turnaround on one of their larger common lots for the subdivision.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
Ms. Riley, are any of the amenities, the tot lot, the basketball court, et cetera, are they going to be in Phase One or Phase Two? You said some of them are going to be closer to, won't be closer to Victory Road or will be?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, with this unsubmitted updated plan, we have one that would be just south of the main entrance and just south of the little intersection that's shortly inside. Right now, the area that has those easements to be vacated, that's a common area. So, there's a sizable piece now that would be available in Phase One. And again, I would want to comment that the developer and the project team understand that we have a requirement to provide at least 10% in common area and it needs to be able to fit that 50 by 100-foot rectangle, which is the standard for open space. So, we're aware of that and we will make sure that we comply with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for item H-2017-0140 Timberline subdivision? It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for item number H-2017-0140. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I think it would, I mean, overall, I think it's a good layout. I mean, as far as this, you know, they did get those bigger lots and as far, I mean, that could have been a whole lot of houses below that ridge instead of just four as far as what they're going to be looking at. But I think the biggest issue I have with this is making sure that the developer is responsible for taking care of that, getting rid of that turnaround and making it a nice common area and need to get what that is going to be, if it is just going to be grass or whatever, that it needs to be done by the developer, that's not left for the HOA to do.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
I agree. You know, this is kind of a funky parcel and I think they've done a pretty decent job. Lot sizes are pretty big, so I mean, it's complimentary to the surrounding area. I understand the gentleman's concern about his views. Unfortunately, it was zoned medium-density residential, so they're, you know, I'm not trying to say for him, but you know, they're, you know, it was going to be homes and planned for in the homes in the future. So, I don't know what to tell him about that. The two concerns that I do have is if the property to the east was old sewer lagoons and it's even funkier parcel than this one. So, what's the timeframe of when that's going to develop and how, what is it going to develop into? And you're holding hostage, holding hostage your open space for something you don't know when. So, my opinion would be, I think we ought to at least consider continuing this until we see a landscape plan and verify what our open space is and/or basically making that turnaround not part of the open space, that they have to comply with the open space for 10% requirements excluding the turnaround parcel.
At a buildable lot or something.
Yeah, you know, and if the HOA, you know, because my guess is more than likely this will be built out before that parcel gets, they extend in the future. So, you're leaving it to the homeowners association to do something with that. So, I'm a little uncomfortable moving forward. With regard to the landscaping, the front half of it with Phase One, I think I would be amenable at least having them extend their sidewalk at least to the east side of Stoddard and then have a crosswalk across the street that we can have a safe access as a compromise. So, that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point. I'm leaning at this point to continue.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
And I absolutely agree. I think my challenge is, this is a tale of two different developments. The one to the, what would be the north is very sink and it's a difficult piece of land, but the piece up against Biltmore just seems like it's shoehorned in there and I'm having a challenge with that. So, I completely agree with Mr., or with Commissioner Yearsley. I think Block One, you could almost make Block One a common area, the whole thing, but I'll let the engineers work that out. But I agree, we can't leave this to the HOA. That's too, and it's too hard for the city to track. So, let's get a landscaping plan in front of us and we can make a better decision. But my only comment was, if there's another way of laying this thing out, because it's a little funky, you could deal with the views from Biltmore and maybe make that Block One area more common area than not and maybe readjust those, because this thing looks shoehorned in there, just my gut, so.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. Certainly, continuation is your option this evening. What I would mention to you is when we first started working with the applicant on this project, we had recommended that they not even extend a street along that portion and stub it. We had actually recommended a common driveway for access to those three lots. If they're at that 150-foot mark, then they wouldn't even have to do a turnaround. The fire department could get in there. That open space could still function. And believe it or not, that open space where that turnaround is does tie into an open space that was constructed with the Biltmore subdivision. So, there will be invisibility, all the more reason to keep it open space connecting to open space. So, I think staff is in agreement with you this evening that maybe we continue this out and see if they can redesign at least that corner and see if they can maybe have those six lots take access from a common drive and try to figure out whether or not we can get some open or pedestrian walkway into that back common lot there and really make it something special for those six homes that front on it. I think there's some opportunities there that the applicant could take advantage of.
And also, I agree with, I agree with that. And then we also need to have, I think, a better understanding of the irrigation component as well. Because if we have to have a pond for irrigation, you know, that takes into reducing their open space potentially as well. Because I think, given 8,000 square foot lots, you're going to have a fair amount of lawn and that's kind of an undue burden to put on the homeowners to have to pay domestic water prices for irrigation.
Agreed, all right.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
After, I move to continue file number H-2017-0140. For, I guess, when would be continuing that to?
With the holidays?
Eighteenth.
Do we want to skip to?
I think you go to the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Eighteenth.
To January 18th for the following reasons. I think to consider sort of the open space challenge. And then I think the other outstanding question again is that irrigation situation and how that'll shape kind of the plan moving forward.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue item H-2014-0140 Timberline subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will move on and open the public hearing for item H-2017-0151 Harper Ridge subdivision. And we'll begin with the staff report.
Madam Chair, this is an application for a preliminary plat and for a conditional use permit. The site consists of approximately 10.68 acres of land, which is zone CG. Excuse me, it's located at 3885 East Copper Point Drive. To the north is a commercial business, zone CG, and also vacant commercial property that's also zone CG. To the east is recently approved single-family homes in the Movado State subdivision, which is zone R8. To the south are single-family homes in the Sutherland Farms subdivision, zone R4 and R8. And to the west is a church, also zone CG. Comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is mixed-use residential. So, as I said, there are two separate requests. The first tonight is the conditional use permit is requested for the multifamily development in the CG zoning district. The proposed multifamily development consists of approximately, I shouldn't, approximately, consists of 124 dwelling units and 16 structures on 10.68 acres of land. The units consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units. For multifamily developments, off-street parking is required in accordance with the UDC, which requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit with at least one of those in covered parking spaces or garage. Based on 124 units, one, two, and three-bedroom units, a minimum of 238 parking spaces are required, 124 of which should be covered. Site plan depicts a total of 248 spaces, 128 of which are covered, which does comply with the UDC requirements with an excess of approximately, last count was 14 spaces over. Minimum of one bicycle parking space for every 25 proposed vehicle spaces or portion thereof is required. Based on 248 vehicle spaces, a minimum of 10 bicycle spaces is required. The applicant is proposing 12. Parking lot landscaping is required to be provided in accord with the UDC. There are existing trees on the site. The applicant is required to comply with the mitigation standards listed in the UDC. And so, as I said, get to the plat in just a second. The certificate of zoning compliance and administrative design review are required for development of the site. Elevations I'll get to in a second. Elevations I'll get to in a second. As I said, this is also an application for this evening is for preliminary plat. The plat consists of 16 residential building lots, four common lots, and two other lots on, as I said, two, 10.68 acres of land. The smallest lot is 11,514 square feet, the average lot size of 20,183 square feet. Here's the plat here. Staff has reviewed, has reviewed the proposed preliminary plat and found it to be in compliance with the UDC. Access to this site is proposed for one access to Copper Point Drive and two to Copper Point Way. Copper Point Way is designated as a collector and Copper Point Drive is considered a local street. Traffic impact study was not required for this project per ACHD. The applicant has some additional information on open space, but they, they do meet the threshold, as I said, for a plat, 10% is required. The applicant proposes to provide 1.39 acres of qualified open space or approximately 13%. The Rideen Bar Canal does run along the southern boundary of the property, which does offer a nice buffer. There's also, going through the landscape plan, the applicant has provided approximately 25 feet of space along the south. Additionally, the Rideen Bar Canal, and then there's a nice buffer on the south side before you get to some existing homes. Six-foot tall open vision fence, having 11, 11-inch gauge, two-inch mesh or other construction equivalent is an ability to ensure access to the waterway as required along the Rideen Bar Canal. Sidewalks are required to be provided with the development in accord with the UDC. Attached sidewalks exist along a portion of East Copper Point Drive. The applicant shall provide detached sidewalks along the entire East Copper Point Way. Frontage of the property, which is considered, as I said, a collector. An attached sidewalk along South NAP Avenue. The plans will be revised to show the missing section of sidewalk along East Copper Point Drive. Streetlights are required to be installed along all public streets. That staff is moving to the conceptual elevations, the applicant proposed. Couple different variations of these, just with different colors, but materials appear to be stucco, stone, architectural shingles, things that would conceptually meet the standards of the UDC and the Architectural Standards Manual. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Josh, in regards to the elevation change from Southern Farms down to the Rideen Bars there, and then this property drops significantly, is that correct? Or is there, is it flat? I'm just looking for a, I know it's gonna come up in the conversation probably going forward, so just...
See if I can pull up a Google Earth shot of that. There, there is some change, I believe, that you, coming from Copper Point Way, over the bridge to Southern Farms, you do, you do, elevation has increased. I don't know exactly how much, but I'll see if I can pull up a...
There, there is a change. I don't know about, I don't know about significant, you know, but it would screen some of this and I, and I know it's kinda like the height of the canal, really, because that canal's kind of raised through that area, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Schultz. Eight-four-two-one, South Ten Mile in Meridian, here on behalf of McMaster Limited Partnership. Mr. McMaster's owned the property for over 10 years now. It was actually part of the original Sutherland Farm application back in 2002 when they annexed all of Sutherland Farm and, and Sutherland, this actually has a little faint track on the Google Earth if you look at it. It was a little horse farm track. So, this is part of Trevor Roberts Farm originally. It was the point of annexation. It was zone Z, it was annexed and zoned CG back in 2002. It was excluded from the development agreement with everything south of the canal, which was zoned R4 PUD with mixed uses proposed. It ended up with a few iterations over the years, that I've been involved in the last two, going all either R4 or R8 south of the canal. There was a discussion about doing some multifamily over the years, it just never came to fruition. So, here we are, doing some multifamily in an existing CG zone that it isn't allowed use. The reason we're before you with the preliminary plat is because we do wanna lot it out, put lots around the, around the, around the buildings. If not for that, it would just be a conditional use permit within the CG zone. It's existing all the way around us, the roads are existing, the height elevation, depending on how you look, is probably at least six to 10 feet, maybe more to the homes' backyards, but, because the homes are above the canal and the canal's above us, elevation difference based on our survey. The, the distance between our buildings and the nearest home, I think it's like 150 feet. There's a nice buffer, not only elevation-wise, but horizontal. And we are limiting to two stories. Our highest height of our building would be 29 feet, according to my architect that drew these up. So, it's, we're not pressing to the max of the two stories, we're not asking for three stories, we're not asking for a three-story commercial building like there is City, Citibank, you know, further away there, you know, we're not asking for that, we're asking for two stories, which is, I think, blends in very well, especially with the elevation change that we have there. And to speak to the density, it's a pretty low density for multifamily at 11, 11 dwelling units per acre. Typically, for multifamily, the ones I'm looking at, there are two- and three-story buildings, we get up to 18 to 20, you know, dwelling units per acre. So, this is really, as far as multifamily goes, it is a relatively lower density. It's got ample open space, we've got good buffers. We agree with all of staff's comments. We wanted a couple clarifications on the buffering requirement to the west. It was kind of something that we, I talked to Josh about earlier today and, and we, you know, whether it leads to alternative compliance or whether it actually applies, I don't know, but there's a requirement for a 25-foot buffer between us and, and the site to the, to the west. It's a, it's a church, it's been there for a while, there's a building up in front on Copper Point, there's a big parking lot in the back, so most of our frontage is, is, if you, can you pull that up, Josh, the site plan?
I will say that staff was incorrect. There's not 25-foot buffer required to the west, it's only five feet, Matt, so...
We're good there then.
We're in good shape.
We're, we're in good shape. I think we got at least 12, if you count them, we're like 20. If you count what they did, we're eight plus 12, you know, and so...
Pull that up here. This is the, this is the area in question we were talking about here, is where the storage building is and the church to the west.
Yeah. So, that's good news. I was a little concerned. I felt like we had a good case anyways, you know, but that was a really good case. One of the things we focused on really immediately was an existing preschool to the north where it says Advantage Early Learning Center. And so, in the first iterations of our site plans, one thing I noticed was, man, we need to pull those buildings back, even though we meet setbacks at 12 or 15, whatever it was, we made them 30, you know. So, we, we put them extra far back from there with a lot of extra trees and some berming in there, so we really wanted to kinda get a nice buffer back there. They've got a good, high-quality wrought iron fence around them already there, but we just wanna get a nice screen and not be looming over that with our buildings. So, we pulled those buildings back and turned, we turned the, the patios facing east-west instead of north-south, which was one of the original iterations. So, that was some of the, some of the specific design we did on this, nice little addition of some of these little single storage, storage buildings. They're just a single story, they, they were able to provide storage 10-foot by 20-feet for people that kind of fit into some of these areas that you can't really do anything else with, so you might as well put them in there. And they provide a nice buffer, too, and they're architecturally gonna be nice and they provide some, some extra storage for the people that are there as well that could be, could be rented out. Got a great clubhouse on this thing with nice amenities, nice clubhouse, nice pool, playground, fire pit, and then good open space. So, Mr. McMaster, we're, we're, we're just telling our consultants, hey, give us your best shot, you know, on this and let's, just take something nice in and, and, and let's, let's do ourselves proud on what we do. There is some contention about traffic. You know, that's been our biggest contention with the neighbors from day one is traffic. What about traffic? People are gonna cut through our subdivision, as some might. But, having said that, ACHD did not originally make us do a traffic study, but then they came back and they started hearing some of the, the feet coming, that we should hide, that we should go engage somebody to do kind of a partial trip generation. And they referenced that in their, in their conditions of approval that that study was done. And it, and there is no excess, although it may be more than people like, it doesn't exceed any of the thresholds and criterias that they've established for the amount of traffic allowed on local roads. So, we're kinda just matching in, we got three good accesses on the Copper Point, we think most people are gonna wanna go out to Eagle, some may wanna cut back through, we can't really control that, but we don't think it's as much, you know. People usually wanna go north and, and west, not, not south and, and east, but you never know, some are gonna do that, you know, we can't control, but I don't think it's a bad thing to have interconnectivity. We always ask for interconnectivity. I know Trevor Roberts didn't wanna build that bridge for the cost, but it was put in for interconnectivity and emergency access and it serves a purpose. And there's a two-edged sword with it, though, is that you get some people using it that may not live in this subdivision, but that's what we get with interconnectivity. So, I think it's a good, a good project, it's a good fit. We've, we've, we've done our homework to make sure that we don't, we offend as few people as possible, it's hard to be 100% on that, but we got good screening. They've got some nice screening to the south, they've got an existing 10-foot multi-use pathway on their side with some mature trees in it. And then we have some, we're gonna have trees on our side, there's some mature, kinda wildish trees that we're gonna maintain as many as we can, some of the taller ones that are along the canal, we don't wanna cut them down if they're good, but we're also planting, you know, a couple hundred more on our site. So, with that, we're gonna go along with staff's recommendation for approval and ask for your approval. Thanks.
Any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
Why are we going for a preliminary plat? Just out of curiosity.
It's a good question. We, we would like to, what you'll see with fourplexes is, in general, you'll see them lauded. Sometimes an investor wants to buy them. It's all managed by Master HOA, it's all controlled. But in this case, we just wanna have that flexibility moving forward to potentially have a couple different owners in there, to buy a building or several buildings, maybe not the whole, whole complex. So, it's flexibility in financing, flexibility in, in ownership moving forward is what it is. That's really what it is.
Okay. Cause I, I, I'm president of our homeowners association and, and unfortunately, the homeowners association a lot of times doesn't have any teeth and so I, I, it really concerns me by breaking this up and not having one owner and how this may look in the future, so.
I understand your concern, but if you look at Mr., Mr. Yearsley, most of the apartment projects or fourplex projects there is individually owned and have strong ownership controls built in to make sure that it is all maintained adequately moving forward for everybody's benefit, everybody's benefit.
Right.
I have another question. We're just a little bit on the plus side on the parking requirements and I understand there's no parking pretty much along that Copper Point Way, so, and we got the canal behind us, so there's really no give there with maybe your newfound landscaping space. Is there room there for some more parking or somewhere? I mean, I love the, the storage units in there, so you really don't wanna take, but is there maybe a way to squeeze out a few more parking spots in there since we are, you know, it's pretty close and there really isn't any overflow parking around this place?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner McCarville. I, I, I'm looking at a spot where we could add three or four, you know, right now towards that, that, that east end between those two storage buildings. There's probably more than a few there that we could add in.
Okay.
I just, it's a little bit arbitrary, though. You know, we meet it, we exceed it, but we don't exceed it enough, so how much is enough? And that's where we get a little, you know, how much?
And I think, you know, for the most part, the, the minimum conditions that are there are usually okay because there's somewhere for, you know, usually some surrounding street parking or something for visitors and some overflow, but with the canal being there and I said, I don't think there's anything out there on Copper Point Way that, that street's wide enough, at least from what I read. So, it, this is pretty contained and I think in those areas, we've, in the past, liked to see just a, you know, a little more above the required minimums and, you know, it, I know it's a give and take, cause you've got some, a beautiful amount of open space, I think it's laid out quite nicely, just, you know, I would say going forward, is there anything, any places you see where there's a few spots?
I do see a few spots. I, I, if you wanna give us a recommendation, you'd like to see five or 10 more, we'll do all we can to get them in there, you know. I, I am seeing it and we, and I know it's a concern of council as well, probably to have some excess overflow for special events, whatever. When we initially looked at this, we wanna where Copper Point was a, was a collector or designated collector and if it wasn't, you could have parked on that, you know, and so that would have been tons of extra, but if they've called it a collector, I don't, I don't think they're gonna let us do that, you know, and so, that's to your point, it would be nice to have a few more, but we just, you know, we meet the code that requires two per for every, you know, two and three bedroom and then one and a half for every single. And we meet that and we got bicycle spaces and handicap and we have a handful left over and we go, okay, well, we made it and how many more do we need, you know? So, it's just, but like you said, it's, there's nice landscaping where there's not those either, so.
Right.
But I do see, I do see probably, you know, four, six, eight spaces we might be able to pick up potentially.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
My recommendation would be 10, if we could.
All right.
You wanted a number.
There's a number right there, Matt.
I will give a number.
There you go. It's, it's always good to get a number.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? We'll move on to public testimony then.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a number that have signed up that they wish to testify, so I'm gonna start off with the people who've signed yes. We'll start with Nancy Boudreau. As you approach the mic, give your name and address for the record and pull that mic right down to you.
My name is Nancy Boudreau. Live at 2611 South Tristram Way, Meridian, that's in Sutherland Farms. I'm sorry not to see a lot more of the homeowners here. I think it's the holidays is what's done it, because there's a lot of concern about all of this going in. We're not only being encroached with all of these apartments, but on the other side of that nap, we've got, I can't right now, Movado. All of that area out there is gonna be all homes and apartments. And you haven't, I don't think that the developer really has acknowledged the fact that they're gonna be using that bridge over a nap from Copper Point or, I don't know if it's Point or what. But anyway, a lot of that traffic is gonna have to come right through.
Speak into the mic. Sorry.
Okay. Sorry. A lot of the traffic from those apartments for school mainly is where we're really concerned. They're gonna be coming across the Nap Bridge, making a left onto Pine Bluff, which becomes Tristram, make a left on Hollendale, go all the way through Mere Woods subdivision, and they would end up on Cloverdale. Did I say Cloverdale? I meant Hollendale on that other one. But then they have to go down through Mere Woods and make a left onto Cloverdale, and then, if you're driving, that is, and then you have to take another road and go back to the school. Now, if the kids are walking or riding their bikes, they have to take the same pathway that I just described and they're gonna, they're gonna end up out on Cloverdale. There is no light at that particular intersection. There is a, a pedestrian light only, just a little bit to the left when you're on Cloverdale. But now, you know, it's very dangerous for the kids to be crossing over there, we're really concerned about that. Right now, we have a number of kids that are coming through our subdivision that live in our subdivision, but with all of this new stuff, they're gonna be using nap to come into our subdivision to try to get out to Cloverdale or if they come across that bridge and they make a right, that will go around and meet up with EasyJet and then they'll, they'll make the right on EasyJet and go out to Eagle that way. So, there's gonna be a huge amount of cars. People take their kids sometimes to school, they come back home, they go to school to get them, they come back home. I mean, those are normal, daily things that parents do, but I just don't understand, first of all, I don't think the apartments themselves are a good fit for that area. I'd much rather see single-family... I'd much rather see single-family homes in there. Um, and I don't know what the regulations are, he was talking about the parking. But if you have 124 units, and one and a half parking places, is that what I heard, I think?
Two.
Two. A lot of people are gonna have two cars per family. If you have teenagers, you're gonna have more. Where are those cars gonna be? You know, they don't, they haven't listed all of the whatevs, I guess.
Right. Ma'am, uh, your three minutes are up, so if you could wrap up your thought.
Okay, one second. I think maybe I've already done it.
Okay.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Next on the list is John Boudreau.
Counsel, I'm John Boudreau. I live at 2611 South Tristram, Meridian, Idaho. And, uh, I live, oh, not too, well, not too far from Nap. Anyway, um, the, right now, I understand this is, uh, Zone CG, commercial use, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, based on all of the area to the, uh, north and east of Nap, that's all gonna be residential, that whole area in there. And there's one little road, Movado Way, that they're talk, talking about putting in there. And that's gonna take care of, I think, believe it's 600-plus homes in there, plus this another 124 over here in the proposed plat that's supposed to be commercial. And, uh, so they can shoehorn everything in there. Then they were talking about the, uh, the park over, parking overflow. I know exactly where it's gonna be, it's gonna come right across the bridge on South Nap and Park in Sutherland Farms. Well, the problem there is you park on either side of the road, you have about enough room for one vehicle to go in each, not even in each direction, in one direction without hitting the stuff. And all that traffic is gonna filter through all these roads that are not wide enough for two-way traffic i- if there's any vehicles parked along the side. Uh, it'd be much better used to leave that as a commercial area where it doesn't have the impact on the schools and the traffic and those types of things. Um, and right now, we have multiple owners, uh, that they're proposing for all these apartments here that, and those lead to issues of maintenance and all those other types of things, uh, the quality of the, uh, the buildings and such, how they're maintained. And, you know, and that's gonna be right across the, the pond, not the pond, but the canal from us, and we'd have to put up with that stuff. Um, so, uh, and the other thing is, i- if I understand it all right, is the developers, the Movado and all this, and this proposed one are all interlinked. And we've talked, this whole thing, we've talked, one new road, and that's Movado Road, and that's on the, the north side of, uh, well, it's on the east side of Topaz, and it, it comes into Overland. The rest of that traffic is gonna be filtered through the existing roads in here, and most of it's coming through Sutherland Farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list who's indicated they'd like to speak is Eric Gabrielson.
Eric Gabrielson, 4231 East Easyjet Drive, Meridian, Sutherland Farms subdivision. I have a two-page report that I submitted today to, uh, the planning zoning that should be part of your packet, covering some areas within their conditional use permit and preliminary plat. Also, I don't know if he's got copy of that, that it can show up on the screen as I go through that. Some development statistics are, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners, for spending the time and listening to my testimony. Stats on this is 16 multifamily, two-story apartments with 124 units and 10.68 acres on Copper Point Drive. The apartment stats are that they're one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units with one and a half spaces for one-bedroom, two and a half space, two spaces for two and three-bedroom as far as parking, for a total of 238 spaces. I feel that parking needed is two spaces for the one-bedroom and 2.5 spaces for the two and three-bedroom, for a total of 300 spaces. I don't feel adequate parking is allowed in this, uh, complex. Its gross density is 11.6 dwelling units, which is far exceeding the, uh, adjacent residential development of Sutherland Farms and Movado. No extra parking for visitors, guests and family seem to exist. No overflow parking allowed on Copper Point Drive. If parking occurs there illegally, Copper Point Drive, the street would be restricted to one-way traffic due to the width. Site history on Sutherland Farm, one of his paragraphs, the subject 10.7 acre site did not have a detailed site plan in the 2002 preliminary plan in Sutherland Farms. Not currently a part of Sutherland Farm Development, no HOA fees or lot development fees being paid to Sutherland Farm HOA. The paragraph's running uses and zones. Insufficient access into and out of the apartment complex. Only direct access is to Eagle Road to the west on Copper Point Drive. Indirect access to Overland Road through the north through Silverstone Complex. No access to Clover Road, Cloverdale Road unless going through Sutherland Farm and Mere Woods. No access south of the apartment complex unless traveling through Sutherland Farm and Mere Woods to get to Victory and Overland. Access to Overland Road through Movado subdivision if and when Copper Point is connected to Movado. No access through Movado to Cloverdale Road. So any access from Copper Point to Movado is gonna be going through the Movado subdivision up to Overland Road. Mentions access and use of a six-acre park and 10-foot regional walkway, which are private and part of Sutherland Farm, should not be used by apartment residents. Mentions pedestrian and vehicle connectivity to the south to Eagle and Victory Road through Sutherland Farm. Excessive traffic would occur through the Sutherland Farm subdivision. Conditional use permit requirement paragraph. Insufficient parking design, as I presented earlier, proposed 230 parking spaces, but needs to be at least 300 spaces with no overflow allowed for visitors. The preliminary plat paragraph. Gross density of 11.6 dwellings, units per acre is excessive and not consistent with surrounding residential development of Sutherland Farm, which is 122.38 acres, 383 units, for a gross density of 3.13 dwelling units. I'm also assuming that the development of Movado is gonna be a similar density, not an 11 density. Uh, pressurized integration is proposed through Napa, Meridian, at a pump station in Sutherland Farm. A stated upgrade to the pumping station is needed to be support the apartment. Who will pay for the upgrade and what would be the effect on the water pressure at Sutherland Farm? Roadways and storm drainages, no street parking allowed on Copper Point Drive for overflow unless it's widened to allow parallel parking. The architectural renderings do not conform to the existing development in Sutherland Farm and Sutherland Downs, also do not conform to Movado subdivision. Overall site statistics, Sutherland Farm, the residential development agreement and Sutherland Farm HOA did not include multifamily component. The Harper Ridge subdivision cannot assert any intent by the above for a multifamily component. To summarize, in conclusion, there's not, there's insufficient parking for residents and guests. This is too high of density for the acreage and location. Traffic access is insufficient. Not a part of Sutherland Farm subdivision, as alluded to, with no HOA fees or site fees being paid. Access to Sutherland Farm Park, private park, and walkway should not be promoted. Nonconforming architectural renderings to adjacent residential developments, and no pressurized irrigation proposal for cost of pumps upgrade and the effect on Sutherland Farm subdivision. My last point is that there should not be any multiple owners of lots, should be allowed. This leads to disrepair of each one of the, uh, unit lots with different owners not working together. I oppose the Harper Valley subdivision for the above reasons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Hosford.
Good evening, committee. I'm Paul Hosford, I live at 2711 South Nap Avenue, Meridian, in the Sutherland Farms district. Um, Eric presented a, every case that I was thinking of there, especially, I was gonna emphasize, I agree with the, um, except, except the looks of these things, what is it called, the renderings? I've, it reminds me of barracks, I was in the service. I don't see, just in the looks of it alone, how can we go forward? Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Gary Van Aken.
Our Aker.
Van Akeren, my name is Gary Van Akeren, I live at, uh, 3967 East Rajah Drive. Um, I am, like everyone else, adamantly opposed, and thank you, uh, counsel, uh, for hearing us out from the community. Um, you know, we've gone through several rounds of these subdivisions around us, and, um, unfortunately, it is around the holidays, and not everybody can be here. Um, I can say we are concerned about this, um, the density, the CG use, just like everybody else has said. Um, this was designed to be commercial, it was platted as commercial general, not for residential. It may be possible to move that with a conditional use, I oppose that. Uh, we'd rather have daytime traffic than 24/7 traffic. Uh, Nap Road that connects, can I get, Josh, can I get you to pull up the, um, aerial that you were just showing in the subdivision, or not subdivision, but the city plat that shows all the plating going on with Movado? Um, we just met last week with the city council on Movado, and they, um, reduced the number of apartment complexes in Movado because of the saturation of high-density and apartments. I realize there's a desire for that, however, um, they've cut that in almost half because they're finding vacancies, and they're not able to fill those. Um, we'd rather see businesses than homes. Uh, we're highly concerned, uh, like most subdivisions with the traffic. Um, this doesn't, um, include, even if there was a traffic study done, it does not include the traffic from Movado that it's gonna generate. We tried to talk, um, previously with, um, planning and zoning, and we've talked with the city council about cross-connection to Cloverdale. Uh, the vote was not to do that. The mayor, um, two weeks ago, worked with us and asked us to work with the builder to try to work with ACHD to create that cross-connection to alleviate the additional traffic from Movado and the subdivision. Um, between Movado and the subdivision, uh, there, there's an amazing amount of traffic that will come through our neighborhood. Um, people going to school, Pepper Ridge is south and east, they're gonna have to come through there. There's no outlet to Cloverdale. They either have to go through Movado, or they have to come, uh, through our, our subdivision. And Nap is not a collector road. If you put traffic or parking on either side, you're gonna bottleneck that, and you're gonna have a problem. Um, I am concerned about the traffic, um, uh, parking on East Copper Way. And, um, I feel like, if you look at this on the northern boundary of this piece of property, that, that boundary's there, I'm not sure if there's a fence, but if that is a collector road with the traffic coming out of Movado, there needs to be a required fence along that street so that kids cannot run from that open space out into that collector road. Um, the, um, uh, parking, I would like to make sure that there is no parking allowed along that road. And, um, I just feel like that this is not the right, um, development for this piece of property. Um, my concern also is that the property across the street is gonna become another subdivision, just like this one, and continue to increase the density. Um, I appreciate your time, and I, I really ask you to consider this. Um, this is really high density in this area, and I, I realize that the city likes that, and, and there's revenue from that, but I just don't, again, think this is the right development for this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Doug McMitt. All right. I'm sorry, McMasters. I've been corrected.
Doug McMaster, 905 Sherrington, Eagle, Idaho. I would like to address just a couple of concerns here, um, starting with one being the plating that, uh, seems to, and it's, it, it's a just concern. I have done this before in Nampa, and we are doing it for financial and phasing reasons and things like that. My intent is to own this in its entirety, but it gives me an option should things change. So what we did to address that was do covenants, as, as there is in any subdivision. So it doesn't matter if I own it, or one of you own it, the rent is X amount. The compound is taken care of by a management company that hires a landscape firm that keeps it addressed and proper. If you look at this close, it's not a normal apartment complex. It's two stories, we've tried to make it a little different. We tried to get the open space, we've covered the parking per the specifications, put a lot of landscaping in it. We've tried to be the buffer between Sutherland Farms and the commercial and the canal itself, and the elevation difference is so huge that it really is two separate projects. And if you look at the traffic and what no one has considered, and the market we're looking for, there's something like 60% of the people between 19 and 30 years old work within two or three miles of that area. Young families, people that ride bicycles to work, and most of them work along Eagle Road, they do not work on Cloverdale. And I have left that site, and unless you know your way through, it's shorter to go to Eagle, back to Overland, take a right and go to Cloverdale than it is to go through Sutherland Farms. Is there anything I might be able to address for you while I'm here?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
That's everybody that we have listed that has said that they would like to testify, but is there anyone else in the room that would like to add anything? Certainly come forward.
My name's Ron Pascal.
Wait, we take you to the mic.
My name's Ron Pascal, I live at 2523 South Jebelar Way in Meridian. And my house borders the proposed project here. Now, first of all, I'd like to say I oppose this. I oppose it for a number of different reasons, one being traffic.
I'm sorry, could you, I know they can't hear.
One being traffic. You know, what's been said is that there's plenty of in-and-out spaces around. I know the developer likes to say that. But if you look on this map, and you look at where these streets intersect Eagle, you'll find that there's one traffic light on Goldstone, not a traffic light on Copper Point, where they say everybody's gonna go, and one traffic light on, uh, the road that goes through our neighborhood, Cop, uh, EasyJet. And so, my experience living in that neighborhood for the last five years, six years, is that the vast majority of traffic coming out of the, uh, commercial area comes up through our area, crosses that bridge, comes down EasyJet, so that they can hit that traffic light on Eagle, so that they can make their left or their right. Now, I don't know if you guys have been on Eagle at any time, uh, in the last couple of years, between like 3:00 in the afternoon and 6:00 in the afternoon, there's cars lined up from Victory all the way to the other side of the 84, trying to get south. And they stop at that, at those signals, and they move, one car at a time, a little bit at a time. And so, it's not easy getting out of that commercial area to go north or south. There's only one exit that exits out onto Overland. And that's, and, and, and there is a signal there, but all of the traffic that's come, that's, that will be coming from the Movado, plus the development that they wanna put into this new section here, I don't think it's gonna work, in my own opinion, for safety reasons, for convenient reasons, for, you know, a number of different reasons. And then the last thing I'd like to say is that everything in that area is commercial. There are no residential houses in that area, where, where they wanna put the apartment buildings. I understand that. I understand that people want to sell their property, they want to make a profit, they want to move on with their life, they want to do all that stuff. But I think a much more suitable development in that area would be, you know, like a senior living area for over fifty-five. It takes care of their parking issue, it takes care of the traffic issue, it takes care of a number of different things. Anyway, I'm opposed to this project vehemently, and that's really all I got to say. If any of you all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for a closer, certainly?
My name's Devon Rackham, thirty-seven hundred East Gerdner in Meridian. I live in Sutherland Farms. I think the people who spoke tonight did a nice job. I really wasn't going to say anything until I heard Mr. McMaster speak. He kind of disappointingly lied about access. And I think I just wanted to make sure it was straightened out, to make sure there's no question. Understand, he has financial incentives, he doesn't live in that area, and so he wants to sell and make best use of the property. Residents leaving that apartment will not go to Eagle. They will not turn on Overland to get to Cloverdale, especially people going to school. There's no right-turn lane there. Having lived there, when I want to go to Cloverdale, I already go through, go through the existing road, out through the existing subdivision. I live not too far away. That traffic will increase substantially, there's no doubt about it. For such a high-density area there, there needs to be an access to Cloverdale for those people. Expecting the existing roads to support that and expecting that people won't use that is, it's not accurate. It's a dream, and I think everybody involved knows that. Also, I just want to say again clearly what these other people have said. I think you'd see a much larger gathering of people here if it weren't for the holiday season and the time this is. There's, you know, people in our area in Sutherland Farms, they're not happy with this plan. We understand that's residential development. We understand that people are going to build homes there, but we want it to be done the right way and not something that's going to hurt us and substantially increase our traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Gail Stocking.
Okay, please pull the mic close to you. There you go, thank you.
Gail Stocking, twenty-eight thirty-seven South Teddy Avenue, Meridian. A question that I have, and I admit I didn't see it on the map. Is there a sidewalk to be built on the south side of the road in front of the apartments?
Can we get that map back up, Josh? Yeah. And we'll get, have the applicant answer.
Doesn't do a great job of showing that, but the requirement is that Copper Point Way is a collector, so a detached sidewalk is required to be constructed along the entire frontage?
Is it already there? My concern is, if it wasn't on it, that's going to take up some of your parking space if they have to back up as a result of the sidewalk being there. And also, the street that goes out on the west side, what does that go through? Is it on the backside of the daycare? Okay, because when I looked, it's not a very wide road or space that is there now, and that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carol Gabrielson. I live at forty-two thirty-one East Easyjet Drive. I just wanted to make a couple of points about the traffic and going through Silverstone. Silverstone Business Park was never made to move residential traffic. It is made to move business traffic. There's two very distinct sides, the east side and the west side of Silverstone. There's one point where that connects, and that's at Cobalt Point and Silverstone, which is about one and a half blocks south of Overland. It's extremely difficult to get through the business park. We are very familiar with it because our daughter works at the Edward Jones office there. Our granddaughter, who is eleven years old, has been going to Nature's Child since she was six months old. So we're in that business park an awful lot of the time. It's going, the Movado and this Harper Ridge think that there's just, these streets can move this residential traffic. It's not going to happen, and it's going to push it through our subdivisions. Copper Point is the main mover of traffic for both back end of Movado and for Harper Ridge. Copper Point is not a decent street to put that much traffic on. Yes, it does go out to Eagle, but it's not a signal. And it also, the visibility on Copper Point, when you're turning out onto Eagle, is really not very good. It's a downhill slope from Victory. So you don't have a really good look at the traffic that's coming, and it comes fast. There's a lot of speeding on Eagle on that part, and I think it's going to cause some real problems. One other thing that I would tend to disagree with Mr. Masters is he said that it's easier to go out Overland and down Cloverdale if you're going to get your kids to Pepper Ridge. Our granddaughter goes to Pepper Ridge. We take her almost every day. So we're well familiar with that route, and it is not the fastest way. And I have to admit, we live in Sutherland Farms, and we go through Muir Woods when we take her to Pepper Ridge because it's the easiest and fastest way. Overland is clogged up every single morning when we take her to school. And it's going to get even more so with all the traffic from Movado. So I think that we need to really take a look at how much traffic we are generating in this area. We tend to compartmentalize all of these, all of these new subdivisions that are being built. And we only look at how the traffic from that particular project is going to affect our subdivisions. But you can't do that anymore, not with the way Meridian's growing. You have to look at what's being generated by all these new projects. And the roads, our road system is not being upgraded enough to handle all of this. If you start pushing all this, all this traffic through our subdivisions, it's going to really affect our way of life. It's going to affect the quality of life, it's going to affect our property values. And I just really think you need to start taking a real strong look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else before the applicant returns? One more.
My name is Ron Porter. I live at thirty-five eighty East Quinn Drive. It's part of Sutherland Downs, which is the Patio Home subdivision, as opposed to Sutherland Farms. With the, with the size of the Movado subdivision going in, it would seem like it would be prudent to wait to put these hundred and twenty units in until we see the full impact of what that five or six hundred homes is going to do to this subdivision. Sutherland Farms has been a good subdivision. HOA's been very active. They've improved that park. They've just done a lot of things to be a good community for the city of Meridian. And to dump all that traffic through that subdivision, I just think is a disservice to those folks, so.
Thank you. And sir in the blacket?
My name is Roland Stocking. I live at twenty-eight thirty-seven South Teddy Avenue in Meridian. And it's part of the Sutherland Farms subdivision. There's two aspects of it that I recall from the last time that we were going to be putting in some homes, apartments at Easyjet and Eagle. If you remember there, there was a letter that was written by one of the principals locally who said, "Please do not have any more apartments come into this immediate area. We are overcrowded as it is." Now, I don't know, I haven't heard that from anyone around here since we've been talking about it. But it is, it's a real concern of mine. I don't, and do not ever expect to have any children anymore in my lifetime. But we have grandchildren and things that are around. We have adopted grandchildren, excuse me, great-grandchildren that come around in our neighborhoods. And we're so concerned about them because we see people who are speeding in our neighborhoods and very concerned about the area. I, we walk, my wife and I walk with our dog in that area all the time. The canals, we've got a nice walkway down the canal. It's one that Sutherland Farms takes care of. And it's going to be used, that's fine, as long as they take care of it, the people are going to be using it. The way that we've been talking tonight, it sounds like a done deal that the apartments are going to go in. I believe that the message is, we don't want the apartments here. They are not ready for it. There's going to be a lot of new traffic coming through the area. We don't know what the traffic is going to be when the Movado subdivision is placing their homes there and their apartments. They reduce their apartments because of what's the overcrowding of the, of apartments right now. The other thing, of course, is the fact that we, as a group, we're not here like we were in the past. And it's because of two things. Number one, I think the fact that last time we were here, which was, I think, last week or so, we were expected to be talking about this subdivision or this apartment complex. And we, I, maybe it was just me, but I misunderstood it. And it was kind of put down that we, it was a done deal, we've already voted, and I understand that now. But we need to be, take a close look at it to see the impact on it, not only the number of apartments that are coming in, but the, how it's going to impact the subdivisions that are around it. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Pamela Judy. My address is four zero four-six East Rajah Drive in Sutherland Farms. I'm also the secretary of the Homeowners Association. I'm not here on their behalf, I'm just here for myself. I would agree with everything that's been said tonight. One of the things that hasn't been brought up is in regards to the daycare center. I can tell you many times throughout the year, they have events there, and their parking lot is overflowed, and they use Copper Point and Cobalt Way to park. And it jams up that corner in there, and it jams up that whole area. And that's something that you need to consider as well, because there's little kids running around all the time, getting to and from their cars, and that's going to be a big concern with the traffic. And we are concerned about the Movado subdivision and how it's going to affect our subdivision with the traffic. And you add these apartments down there, and it's even going to make it worse. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that everybody? Okay, would the applicant like to come back?
Thank you, Commissioners Matt Schultz, again, for the record. If that wasn't a strong showing, I don't know what was. Even though a lot of people didn't show up, they still had their, had their voice heard. Can you hear me now? I'm speaking into the mic. Okay. So, obviously, a common theme throughout this has been traffic. We stand behind our ACHD approval. We stand behind the fact that it was studied, and it was the same study, traffic engineer that did Movado. It was not ignored. It was incorporated. They did trip distribution, they did trip generation. And there is more traffic on those roads projected than they would like. It still does not exceed the criterias of ACHD. It just doesn't. I mean, we've done it, we paid for it, we hired the consultants, they do their own independent analysis, and it's more than they would like. But it does not exceed the criteria. And ACHD approved this with no qualifications. And they just didn't rubber stamp this. They looked at it, they managed to jump through some hoops, and we did it. And that's with Movado being what, ten, fifteen times the size of us? I mean, that's a huge site next to us. And so we're kind of getting drawn into the Movado, you know, traffic argument somewhat, but, you know, it's, because it's been said that they needed a Cloverdale access. Well, we have no control over Cloverdale access, but we're getting drawn into that argument. So having said that, we are going to put a sidewalk and widen slightly because, to the full width on Copper Point. There's some pavement lacking there now. I don't know if it's six feet or seven or eight, whatever it is, there's a certain width we have to widen. We're going to do a five-foot curving gutter, five-foot detached sidewalk with a tree-lined park strip along there. Whether ACHD makes us no park that or not, I don't know. We're not using it in our calculations for parking. You know, there may be parking allowed, there may not. I'm not sure what they're going to do, but that's whatever ACHD wants to do with that public road. And these are public roads that are all interconnected out here. Like I said before, the fact that that bridge went in was an ACHD decision. They knew exactly that there would be cross-connection traffic when it was required of Sutherland Farms to put it in. And here we are, talking about the cross-connecting traffic that goes through. And I, I get it. I live on a busy road, and I hate it when people speed in front of my house. I get it, you know, but you, how do you regulate people from speeding other than post a speed limit? And hopefully, there's a cop out there, you know, giving tickets more than once every, you know, six months, which gets frustrating. However, we are focused towards Eagle, we are focused towards Overland. We are a quarter mile away from Eagle. Movado is, you know, between a half and three-quarters a mile from Eagle. So we are focused towards Eagle Road. That's where most of our traffic is going to go. As far as some of the comments that were brought up, we do think multifamily's a good fit. We think it's a good transitional between the Big Citibank building and what could have went here for a commercial, you know, in terms of bigger buildings. We think it's a good transitional with a two-story. The eleven units to the acre, interestingly enough, even though we're not part of Sutherland Farms, if you look at the overall density of the overall Sutherland Farms and us with what was applied for back in two thousand and two, it's four to the acre. It's within what everybody expected for the overall density. I mean, we're, we're not blowing anything up with this. So as far as the gross density far exceeds, we don't think so. The pressure irrigation, Nampa Meridian runs regional systems. So it's just not Sutherland Farms system, even though Sutherland Farms might have built it first and then other subdivisions connect onto it. And they're going to make us upgrade the filter. There currently is no filter on that pump station that Trevor Roberts put in, for whatever reason. And so they're going to make us put in a, you know, a pump, a filter and any other pump upgrades they want us to do. So we're not going to decrease anybody's pressure. As far as fencing, we are going to put a fence along Copper Point Drive behind those units. So to their point, we don't want any kids running out into the road either. And so there's going to be fencing around that, fencing around our pool area. They have a nice park. We're going to have a nice park, too. We're going to have a pool. They don't have a pool, but we're going to have a pool. You know, we're going to have some nice stuff. I think, we think people are going to hang out in our park area, but they might trickle over. I don't know what they're going to do. But we're going to provide a really nice amenity to keep our residents on our, on our site. You know, we're throwing the amenities to keep them there. The daycare center, like I said about parking, ACHD may allow parking on Copper Point. I don't know, but we're going to improve it, we're going to widen it, we're going to put the sidewalk along there and do what's safe for everybody. And we're going to put in over a quarter mile of six-foot ride iron fence along the Ride and Ball Canal. Six-foot ride iron, even though your code is chain link, we're going to do the six-foot ride iron all along there. It's like fifteen hundred feet, just, again, safety, keeping kids out of the canal. Even all the commercial sites don't have any, weren't required any fence. We're providing fencing around ours because we're residential, and there's going to be more of a chance. So we're, we're putting that perimeter fence all the way around it for safety purposes. So we really do think, although traffic is such a big deal, and I get it, I understand it, I'm sorry, but this was planned for in the overall regional traffic system. It really was. It doesn't seem like it, it seems like there's too much traffic, but it really was planned for in compass projections and all those things. At the end of the day, we hang our hat on what ACHD approved. And ACHD does control the roads that we are just connecting to. We were just connecting into what was already there when we got here. And just to wrap, Mr. McMaster had a chance to sell this for a lot of money a few years ago. He wants to build it himself, he wants to own it himself, he wants to run it himself. It's named after his granddaughter. I mean, he wants this to be nice, and we've hired the best professionals to design it. The renderings probably don't do it the best justice of what this is going to look like. But this is going to be a really nice, really nice multifamily site that we can all be proud of. And it's, it's going to be something that's And it's, and it's, it's going to be something that's going to be run well. And, and, and your staff ensures that, your staff's recommended approval, your staff has very stringent, trust me, um, review standards and design standards that, that these, these are not going to be cheap. These are going to be nice with a lot of architectural detail, a lot of rock, stucco, brick, all those things that, that really make these nice and, and long-term investments that want, want to be maintained and people will be proud to live there. So, with that, we ask for your approval.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H dash twenty seventeen dash zero one five one Harper Ridge subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If I know my fellow commissioners, are we ready for a five-minute break before we continue or do you want to plow through?
Break.
Break, please.
Five minutes. Are you guys ready? Okay, we will return to our meeting, um, and we have just closed the public hearing and we'll move on to Commissioners' comments. What do our Commissioners feel about this? Let's just jump off. I think I, I would like to just start, I mean, and just reminder, the CG zoning is, does include residential up to our forty. So, with this being a density of about eleven, I mean, we're not even really kissing the lower, uh, threshold of the R fifteens, so, which is allowed in the CG zone. So, I think it's a good place to start.
I don't know, briefly, just speaking of the traffic, I mean, there's been, you know, I am absolutely sympathetic. I think all of us are Meridian residents and see this tremendous growth that's occurring. And obviously, I'd, I'd, I'd say this is probably the center of growth really for, for Meridian and the community. I mean, there's just explosive growth occurring. And, you know, I live near Tuscany and there's been developments around us and I've listened to my neighbors, um, talk about the traffic situation and tell me how, you know, how it's negatively going to impact kids and, and their quality of life. And I mean, I have kids myself. And then you have a traffic study which kind of balances out that, you know, rather, uh, maybe overly negative assessment of the traffic situation. There's no doubt that traffic's going to increase, but again, I, I see a study which says that, you know, it's in line with the growth that's already occurring, which is a lot. And I think that, you know, I weigh that, you know, uh, as I weigh the fact that I think that this area, you know, complies with, with the way it's been zoned too. And it's, again, on that lower end. So, I think at this point, I'm, I think, open to approving it and I'd like to hear what my fellow Commissioners have to say.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Oh, did you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
No, I, I tend to agree. I, I think Commissioner Yearsley uses this a lot as growth is in that area. And you guys have dealt with a lot and I know that, that we've, we've worked through things on the EasyJet and on Eagle Road. I think there's potential that, that what you could get in this area could be a lot more dense and more impactful if it was a commercial building like Citibank. It was three or four stories in the CG zone that you would not be very happy with. And so, this is a, it's a balanced approach to this project. Um, I know, I think it, it, the density is not as high as it could be. I think that they were very, they were, uh, took a lot into account in regards to making it two-story, so that, those views and some of the, the impacts that could have been taken away by a three-story building or more is being balanced. I think it's got very nice amenities. I actually, I like the, the, the look of the buildings. I think they're different, they're modern and they're... Sir, you had your comment, you had your time to make your comment. Let us deliberate, okay? I, we're, we're, it's, everything's not going to look exactly the same as Sutherland Farms or other things. And so, um, I tend to, to agree that we have to use the studies that we have in front of us, have the information we have in front of us. And so, I tend to lean towards, uh, lean towards an approval too.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Yearsley.
When I first saw the application on the staff report, um, my first concern is we're, we're chewing up a lot of commercial property for residential. And, and especially this area, um, I personally, I think I would almost rather see the four-story Citibank building there personally. I drive Eagle Road every day, so I, I am in your boat. Uh, I know the traffic's horrible. So, I, I, I struggle with this because I think the way the developer has put this together with his amenities, I think the site looks really nice. He's done a very good job laying it out. I, my two big concerns is I still think this should be commercial. We're chewing too much of our commercial property up to residential. And the other concern I have is, I, I understand the CC and ours, I work with them every day with the homeowners association. Sometimes they do not work and, you know, I do not like this parceled up. And so, because of those two items, I, I can't, I can't be in favor of this project.
Mr. Perrow.
Madam Chair. I like that this creates transition between the commercial and the existing residential, that part of it, I really, really is appealing. I don't drive this area often, so other Commissioners probably have better perspective than I do, um, as far as the traffic in that, you know, that what might come off of Copper Point or, um, down through Sutherland Farms. I also, um, I, I just, I like that it's a transition. As far as the parking goes, I completely agree with, with Commissioner McCarville on there needing to be additional parking spaces, needing to be overflow parking. And, um, I, I think that, that the average resident in this location probably is going to head out towards Eagle and go up north to any commercial area rather than going south unless they're specifically going to a school maybe, but otherwise, I would assume that most of the traffic's going to head up and go north and up to Overland and somewhere that's, that's commercial or up to the interstate in that direction rather than, than heading south as often. That's my thought on that, but, um, yeah, so, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Casinelli.
I didn't hear a whole lot of objection in terms of the, the layout and maybe a few design things. The biggest was traffic. And I too am very, very sympathetic with traffic. We've, where I live, neighboring subdivisions have opened up and, and, uh, my street is, uh, if you come and watch me in the evenings, I'm usually swearing very loudly at cars going down my street. I'm not happy with it. How ACHD never saw fit to put another, um, to, to put something else out to, uh, to Cloverdale But I think all in all, I, I, I think it's a, it is a good transition. Uh, when I first was, was reading through it, I was thinking it was going to be a, a three-story or more and it's not, um, which, which I think it, you know, that, that's going to be a good, uh, impact for, for the homes there as far as, as far as what they're going to see. I, I don't really see people heading over to that park in, in Sutherland Farms. Um, I think people are going to, people are going to hang out in the, in the apartments and they're going to, they're going to hang out with the pool and those sorts of things. The, the traffic is, I, I really feel with the, I, I, I'm very sympathetic with that traffic and the subdivisions aren't made to handle additional traffic going through them. Those are, those are my thoughts on that. But I, you know, this isn't, this is going to pale in comparison to Movado and, and I think of what that's going to do, particularly trying to get over to, uh, to the elementary school over there. I don't think this is going to be a big, uh, you know, I don't see a lot of people wanting to get out to Cloverdale from this. I think Movado, which is already, you know, already heading through, that's, that, that's going to be the, that's going to be the impact. I don't, not, not this project so much. Not sure how exactly I feel though, overall, because I, Commissioner Yearsley has, has brought up some excellent points.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
I'd like to make one more comment. I agree with Commissioner Yearsley regarding the multiple, the, the platting and, and not allowing for multiple owners. There's a similar, um, development near where I live. There's multiple owners, the buildings are in different states of maintenance at any one time and it has affected that development, I think. And I can see why he would express concern in that regard.
Yeah, I, I actually thought it was a nice transition between, I mean, especially being the two-story and with the amount of green space that they've put in, you know, storage units right there within the development. I, I thought it was a nice layout and nice amenities. I definitely would like to see more parking and I don't know, Commissioner Yearsley, maybe you can help us out on this. Is it, I'm, I'm not thinking it's within our purview, but is it to mandate that they be single owner or tighten the screws on that at all?
Um, I, I would refer to legal on that question.
I think you can make the recommendation. I'm not quite sure, Bill, what other, whether you can condition that in it.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, over the years, you've seen these projects come before you and staff's consistently told you that that's what we've been conditioning applicants to do, to have one HOA overseeing the entire complex. So, that condition, if I remember correctly, is in the staff report. They have to provide that to us as part of getting their certificate of occupancy for these sites. So, certainly, to make it clear on the record, yes, you could include that as a condition, that one entity oversees the entire complex for maintenance purposes. And we'll make sure that that conditions adhere to when they come in with their certificate of zoning compliance.
Is it, that language is already in the staff report?
Well, the staff report says that they need to provide us a maintenance agreement. It doesn't specifically say one owner. So, if that's how you wanted to read, we can certainly add that verbiage in there for you.
So, I actually have a question regarding that. So, could we break those two up and reprove the conditional use permit, but deny the plat?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, again, I would defer to legal, but typically when you're looking at property that's already annexed and zoned in the city, um, you're looking at the plat for conformity with our, our standards. In the CG zone, there are no minimum lot sizes.
Okay.
Um, so, it's, it's, it's tough to deny a plat when, exactly when there's really no minimum lot size. It's just for ownership purposes is why they're, they're divvying it up. Or as Mr. McMaster said, the applicant, the owner, it is typically, a lot of times in our experience, it is for phasing purposes, for financing.
Any more comments or are we ready for a motion?
I mean, I don't think we have a...
You want to think and ponder on the comment? Any other questions for staff?
So, I'm going to be bold. So, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend denial to City Council, a file number H twenty seventeen dash zero one five one as presented in the staff report for December twenty first, two thousand seventeen, for the following reason, that I don't think it is an appropriate place to be putting the apartments. I think it should be commercial and, um, and I don't like the, the preliminary plat being multiple ownership. So, for those two reasons.
All those in favor of denial, say aye.
We need a second.
Oh, second, give me a second. There being no second. There being no second, would there be another motion?
Madam Chair, did that die, for lack of a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm going ahead with an approval, what am I saying to that multiple ownership, exactly?
You can put an additional request condition on it to have...
One owner. Okay.
Well, and I think you have to make a recommendation to council, because I think that is a council recommendation versus us.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Could we, if you did, if there was a denial strictly with that reason, that way they would, as opposed to making a recommendation to council that there be one owner?
Well, like you said, with it already being zoned and preliminary platted, I mean, already zoned, they're coming before preliminary plat, we actually have to put it on its merits, and based on its merits, it meets the preliminary plat requirements.
Yep.
And so we can't deny it on its own merit because of one of the preliminary plat, so from my understanding.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council of H-2017-0151, as presented in the staff report with the following modifications, that there be an additional ten parking spots, I believe that was the number we settled on, and that we recommend to City Council that there be one owner of this property, that be added to the conditions.
Okay.
As a condition of zoning compliance, is that what that is?
What's that?
Or is it a condition of zoning compliance? Is that what that, or is it just a recommendation for one owner?
I think it's just a recommendation, because that's...
Just wanna make sure.
...City Council purview.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve file number H-2017-0151, Harper Ridge subdivision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing for item number H-2017-0141, Track Utilities Expansion.
Hold on, Madam Chair, we just make a point of order that we're losing one of our members.
Yes, point of order. Commissioner Wilson will be absent for the remaining of the meeting.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
And we'll give the room just a second to clear, and then we'll start with the staff report. Okay, Mr. Parsons.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, last item on the agenda this evening is the Track Utilities Expansion Conditional Use Permit. The site is located at 305 West Franklin Road, consists of 5.02 acres of land, and is currently zoned CG within the city's corporate limits. The comprehensive plan for the site is commercial on the future land use map, so it is zoned appropriately with what we have vision for, the zoning coincides with the comprehensive plan. And then I'd also let you know that this property is primarily surrounded by partially-developed and undeveloped commercial properties, so it's surrounded by commercial development. As I alluded to in the opening, the applicant here to discuss expanding a conditional use permit that they received back in '06 on the adjacent property just to the east of the site, as you can see on the right of this site slash landscape plan, which originally, when this came through to the city, it was H&amp;H Contractors is what the original business owner was, and it's since been sold to Track Utilities. And as you just heard tonight, the valley is rapidly growing, as we all know, as we see application after application coming through. This particular business owner is looking for additional storage to expand the site. In order for that to happen on this property, we have to allow them to float their conditional use permit onto this adjacent property with, of course, the property owner's permission, which we did receive. So, right now, the current use of the adjacent property where the CUP was approved, it's been approved for equipment, sales, rental, and repair and office uses. And so what the owner is proposing, or what they're proposing this evening, is to develop the five acres adjacent to the site, to the west, with essentially a storage yard. They're expanding the storage yard, that's really what the primary purpose is. You can see here that they are proposing an access, an emergency access to Franklin Road. Comments from ACHD, the applicant was required to share the access point that you see located here between the two property lines, and this would be the main entrance in and out of both this lot and the adjacent property moving forward. The applicant is also required to put side obscuring fencing around the perimeter of the site. Directly to the south, we have an RV park. Because there are extended stay sites, the director has deemed that as a residential use, and therefore, staff is recommending that the applicant construct a 25-foot wide landscape buffer along that south boundary, along with that six-foot side obscuring fencing in accordance with UDC standards. Probably the biggest contention between staff and the applicant is the existing residence that's currently on the property. Single-family homes aren't allowed to be in the CG zone, so it is non-conforming. It has been vacant for quite some time, and it's my understanding that the home is currently being used as storage by the property owner. Both staff and the Fire Department and Police Department have recommended that this structure be removed prior to the storage yard use commencing. Also, because the applicant is wanting to use the storage yard as an interim use, as part of our conditions of approval, staff is recommending that this conditional use permit have a sunset clause. So we have wrote a condition of approval that this use should cease within a five-year time period. And the hope is that at some future date, the highest and best use for this property is for it to go commercial and be further redeveloped, and at that point, we would look at wider landscape buffers along Franklin Road. We would reevaluate the access to the site and how that would connect with the adjacent property, and we certainly envision more commercial structures on the site, not it being a storage yard forever. So with that, staff is recommending approval. We have not received any written testimony on this property. And I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
So, Bill, just clarification, that site's really not being used at all, is it correct?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Yearsley corrected. Right now, it's just a boarded-up home and vacant property.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Sean Nichol, 1589 North Estancia Place, Eagle, Idaho, and I'm here representing the applicant on this project. First of all, I want to thank staff for their working with us, first of all, and for the recommendation for approval. Keep in mind, this is a temporary use that we're asking for. We're not asking for this to be the final use of this property. The intention, and just to clarify, I'm actually representing the property owner who are here this evening and not Track Utility. Track Utility approached my clients with the proposal to lease their property for expansion of their storage, of their existing business. So while we do appreciate staff's support, we are hoping that because this is a temporary use, that the city and the Planning and Zoning Commission will work with us on a few items that we wanna address this evening. One, obviously, that staff already mentioned was the removal of the home, and I'm gonna have Mr. Rackham get up here in a second, he can kind of explain the issues with that. The second is the timeframe. While we do recognize, and part of our application stated that this is a temporary use, we would like to expand that some additional time to possibly 10 years rather than five, or if you feel that might be too much time, maybe five years with a time extension allowance after the first five years to come back and get reevaluated. It's, when Track Utility leases this property, they're gonna have to do a lot of, put a lot of expenses towards getting it into compliance, like the fencing and landscaping and things like that. And five years is probably not gonna be enough time for them to do that. We don't know what the future use of the property is going to be, so it could redevelop in five years, but we'd like to push that to a 10-year sunset clause. And then the other issue is the 25-foot buffer on the southern property line up against the RV park. So, staff is proposing that we do a six-foot solid fence along the perimeter of the property, which we're fine with. I did speak this morning with the owner of the RV park, and he was supposed to show up tonight, and he did not to testify, but his main concern is having vehicles parked back there that might start up in the morning, and exhausts and noise. And so he was, and his name is, his name is Rick Linquist, and he's the one I spoke with this morning, and he would be fine with us putting a six, so currently, there's about a four to five-foot chain link fence with slats along that southern boundary, and he would be fine with us placing a six-foot solid fence against that property line, against that existing chain link fence, to provide a visual buffer. And he would be willing to have us, we don't feel that, since it's a temporary use, that planting trees and landscaping and trying to figure out how to get irrigation back there is necessary for Track Utility to look at this nice landscaping next to their storage. If we could have a condition on the application that does not allow any parking of vehicles along that southern border, and we have the six-foot high fence, the neighbors indicated that they would be in favor of that, and that would provide us with the ability to move forward with this project. I believe that's all I have. I want Lance to come up and talk a little bit about the house, and then we can address any questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Sorry, assuming that the other two guys are with you, we're not gonna have any public testimony, so I'd like to at least have some conversation with this. I have to agree, I think I admit, I have a tendency to agree with planning staff. I would hesitate, I struggle to do 10 years without the removal of the house. You know, I would consider 10 years if the house was removed and make it more suitable for the needs, and we could probably come up, at least for me personally, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but the landscaping in the back, I understand not wanting to landscape that, and I understand the, you know, if, my thinking is, is if we can get a written statement from the adjacent property owner, but I also think we need to have a condition that no equipment shall be greater than the fence, be stored back up against the fence, because that's the goal of that 25-foot buffer, is to not be able to have a 20-foot stall, you know, piece of equipment sitting there as well. So, you know, if we could actually make the condition that, you know, no vehicles against the fence and potentially nothing stored higher than the fence within that 25-foot buffer as well. Those kind of things that I look at personally as what I would see, and I'd be interested to see what the other commissioners would think as we're talking about this, because I don't wanna make a condition that you're not willing to do. So, you know, so I'd like to kind of talk about this prior to closing the public hearing, if you guys don't mind.
And Madam Chair and Commissioner, I think that's a reasonable request, but again, we'll discuss that, I guess. And again, Madam Chair and Commissioner Yearsley, we would like to, the applicant would like to discuss the house further.
I'd like to hear more about the house.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Are there, before he gets up, are there any other questions about the other, about the...
I may bring you back up for a minute.
Yeah, we may bring you back up.
I do have, I do have one quick question. What is the, on the current lot that Track Utilities is on, what is the, what's the fence situation on the back there? Is that just chain link?
It's the same consistent four to five-foot chain link with slats all along the southern border.
Oh, privacy, the whole southern border of the RV park.
All along the northern side of that RV park, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for listening to me here.
State your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that. Lance Rackham, 4674 East Deer Flat, Kuna, 83634. I'm here representing my parents, who have owned this property for over 40 years. They're older than their age, and so as a family, we are wanting to help them out with some income later on in their, later on their golden years, and Track Utility has come to us and offered to, they need some more room, and so to expand on a couple of things that were already brought up. On the very backside of the property, are we able to blow that up at all, on the bottom side of the property, on the south side where Track already is? Currently, Track Utility does utility for all these subdivisions that are going in, and so they have a lot of, a lot of spools that will have wire and storage on it, and that's what they're needing. And you can kind of see in this picture, there's not any vehicles on that back south side. It is just that kind of material that they just need a yard to put it in. They have a fair amount of equipment as well, and most of that stays out in the middle. So as far as that buffer goes, that would, I don't believe there would be a problem with that at all. The home there, it was mentioned that it has not been occupied for some time. That is not 100% accurate. My father uses that right now as a storage facility, and he frequents that quite often. It is, it is not in very good, it does not have very good curb appeal right now, and we realize that as family members have gone by and seen that, the curb appeal needs to be brought up to standards, but it is not in, it's something that could still be rented out and still could be used on the upper level of that home. So for the condition to be torn down, I'm not sure why we would tear down a home that is still has value from a rental standpoint. We would, I guess we're looking for a concession to bring the curb appeal to standards. There is current landscaping there and a sprinkler system that has been turned off and not used, and that's able to get up and going and get that curb appeal back, so it looks nice for those that are driving by. The five-year, why the five years is important is the money that it's taking Track Utility to, that is a pasture behind that home. That's a five-acre parcel, and so you have, you know, four acres and three-quarters, so that's pasture. Well, they're gonna have to bring in 12 inches or so of pit run, and then on top of that, they're gonna have to bring in road mix, and then it's also, we need to have dust abatement, so it'll be recycled asphalt, and then the fencing and all that, it does not pencil out at five years to do all that. So it coincides, five years where that number originally came from, is it coincides with the lease options they currently have, but if the option is there for them to extend that, they would obviously like to do that, so it pencils out for them. Track Utility employs, I think, around 200 people. They're a great asset to the city of Meridian, just at that location, and so it would be, it would be sad to see them leave, because that is the alternative right now, is if they can't get the yard space they need, they're moving out, so. yard space they need, they, they're, they're moving out, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I add, could I, could I add one, one thing?
Yes.
And, and Lance brings up a good point. As far as landscaping in front of the house, that can be, that can be put together with the, with the, I think staff's allowing us a ten-foot landscape strip along the, the, the boundary of Franklin Road, and with, as Lance said, there is existing irrigation from the house that can be turned on, and so we could, we can incorporate the ten-foot with the existing landscaping in front of the house and beautify all of that, and then it would obviously be up to Mr. Rackham to work on the house itself and, and secure it and make it, make it more appealing, so that he could rent it out. I think that's, I think that's what we're trying to propose on that. So I can stand for any other questions you have, I just wanted to add that in with that.
I guess, I'd be curious what other thoughts on the house. I, you know, I struggle with that, because it, it is a non-conforming use, and we are doing improvements on the property, and typically, when we do improvements on the property, we like to try to make that the whole property is in within conformance.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, my feelings on the house is, I don't think you're gonna rent it out with industrial storage all around you, it needs to be one or the other. I mean.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I, I, I totally understand the, the concerns, and, and, and you're, you're correct, that it is a non-conforming use currently in a, in a commercial zone. I think the alternative, though, is that at some point, that the, the, the value or the, the cost of doing the improvements is gonna be outweighed by the, by everything, and, and if it doesn't go forward, then we're gonna be stuck with a five-acre piece of property that's just gonna sit there until it does develop in five to ten years. Not, sorry, not that that's a threat, that's, that's just kinda reality, as opposed to having at least three-quarters of it being, or nine-tenths of it being used, being looked at on a daily basis, being taken care of, and the house being brought up to a respectable standard. Now, whether that's, you know, whether it's converted into maybe an, an office or, or a commercial type of use, or, or what have you, but I, I kinda, that's why we're asking for some, for some help in kinda trying to figure out how we can do this, to make it work for the, for the family, for Track Utility, but also for the city, so the city has something that, that's not a, a dis- distraction or nuisance to place and fire, so that's kinda what we're asking.
Right, and I, I think with some of that, and, and again, I try not to speak for my commissioners, I apologize, I, I'm assuming that not in front of the house, you're gonna put fencing with screened fencing up besides the house, is that not correct?
Fencing would go, fence, if, Bill could put that back up there, fencing's gonna go around the house, will go around the house.
I know, but, but be, on the other side of the house, you're gonna have fencing up to at least probably the sidewalk or near the sidewalk, that's, that is screened, if that's not correct.
Yeah, the storage, the storage portion of it will be screened from public view.
So why not, we just screen the whole frontage and pick that house, not even as a house, and it becomes a storage part of the, the overall storage? I, I struggle with not putting the house as a house use, because I don't, I, I'd like to get rid of that, and, and, you know, maybe we just put the fence all the way across and use that as part of either Track Utility uses it, or he has an agreement that he gets to go into their yard, and...
I think, I think if that's something, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think that's something that probably could be worked, worked out. I'm, I'm seeing some nodding of the heads in the back, so maybe, maybe that's the, maybe that's the alternative that we try to work on.
Madam Chair.
And, and still, and still secure and, and, and get the house to, or the building to at least somewhat reasonable standards.
Can I ask Commissioner Yearsley a question?
Oh, absolutely, please, and that's why I was hoping maybe you guys would say, oh, I don't like this, or not.
And Mr. Rackham, I appreciate you, like, I, I think, per your point, I appreciate what you're trying to do, if you're a family, I think, to, I, I would be okay with, we talk about making it a commercial use, like, like, we need more little office-type spaces, but you can't make that a house that is rentable for residential, so I agree with you there. I, so I'm not sure if we need to put some conditions around what it can be used for, if we're not gonna tear it down, like, 'cause I, and I agree that, or it's hard to pencil it out, so I'm trying to find a balance in between, so I, I'm up for suggestions, but I, I, there's, I don't think we can put that into a residential use.
Right, and, and I, and I, I, I said, I, I agree, if we could put it into some sort of a useful purpose.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Where it's not just boarded up and...
Yes, yeah. And, and, you know, that was my thought, is we just screen the whole thing, he can, you know, keep it as his storage, and it, it's no longer a house, it becomes a, a accessory dwelling to the parcel.
It's just on the property.
As, as a, and, and, and I'm not meaning this by any means offensive, but, but as a threat, I, I personally don't have a problem with Track moving to someplace else. I realize that we would lose those jobs, but at that point, you have ten acres now that becomes developable, that we could see something potentially better. I'm, I'm not saying that what it's there is bad, but, you know, at, at ten acres, it becomes a lot more desirable for future commercial development versus just five acres, so...
You're taking, you're turning a negative into a positive.
Absolutely, so, you know, so them leaving, is, you know, we, we like to keep our businesses here, but them leaving personally is not a, a, a reason to, to, for me to, to lower my standards.
I, I appreciate that.
So, that, that's kinda what I was trying to come to.
When hopefully that, it could give the Rackham family an opportunity to sell that for even a better, but, yeah, no, I...
So, so I, I guess, what, what conditions do we wanna propose? I guess, I'd be curious to what others people think, I, I feel like I'm the only one making the deal here.
Or we, do we need to close the...
Well, that's what I was wondering, are we at the point now where we're willing to let the applicant go?
Well, I guess, I, I...
Madam Chair, may I ask one more question of the applicant? So I guess what I'm, again, struggling with, like the other commissioners, is really what asset is this home to you? If it's not in good repair, and there's maintenance costs, would, wouldn't it be more effective for you to tear it down and put in an actual storage building that's designed for that? Is there, I mean, I assume you've run the numbers and decided that that's not cost-effective in addition to the other improvements that would need to be made, or the, or the, the tenant has done that?
Madam Chair.
I mean, is there, is there an attachment there from a family standpoint? Help us understand that, why this house should stay.
Madam Chair and Commissioner, and, and you are correct, there, there is somewhat of an attachment, the, the, the Rackham, yeah, do you wanna explain, call it them, talk about it?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Devon Rackham, thirty-seven-hundred East Gerdner in Meridian, eight-three-six-four-two. The outside of the, the house is in disrepair, there's a broken front window, I think it should have new locks on it. I walked through it in just the last few weeks, and there's nothing about the inside of it that is dilapidated. I mean, it's forty-plus years old, it's old, but it's, it's still usable as an office. In fact, that was, when we moved to town many years ago, that was the original use for it, was an office, and so there's not a real good reason to tear it down, because, you know, it, it does need some cosmetic work for sure, because it hasn't been used, but inside, it's still very usable. So, you know, we, we like the idea, we, we're happy to talk about fencing it off and, and having it be part of the property, we, you know, the cost of tearing it down and building something out just doesn't make a lot of sense, because other than, you know, the outside cosmetics, which can be improved, it's, it's, it's a useful structure still. Is that helpful?
So I, I guess, I, I think, for, for me personally, I think you're, I, I'd be more comfortable fencing it off and making it part of the compound, and if they wanna make an office, have them come back and come back with TI improvements and have that go through a separate application, instead of saying, we, we can allow it for office at this point, just out of curiosity. And, and, and Bill's comment about we should be going into deliberation, I actually watched city council, they actually make all their deliberations before they actually close the public hearing, which I thought that was kind of interesting. Is that not what your understanding is how so, so actually making these comments and discussions right now, I don't think is, is out of order? Is that not correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So, so I, I still think we can make that comment, so what's, what's that?
I said, I, I agree with that, that's when I, when we first started on here, I tried to do that, and I got, I got shot down by your predecessor, no, I'm just joking, I'm just, Ted can beat me up later. No, but I think I agree with you, having the conversation, 'cause then we can have feedback from the applicant on certain things.
Yeah, I don't wanna make, I don't wanna do a condition that, that he's gonna say, well, I just, the whole deal's just gone now, because...
I can't make it work.
Yeah, I can't make it work.
Madam Chair and Commissioners.
But it does, it does need to...
One at a time, I think, for our lovely recorder over there. Okay, Commissioner Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It does need to be kept as a commercial, a non-residential use.
I, I agree.
I'm in total agreement on that.
Okay, so we got that one out of the way.
Comments, questions down here?
Commissioner Cassinelli.
One question for Commissioner Yearsley, with your proposal to fence that all in, are you, would we still keep, we would still keep an access point off Franklin on that lot, correct?
No, my, my, my motion would be to, you have the one entrance that they have for emergency exit, and, and no other entrances, would be my, my recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
He would actually have to come through Track Utility's yard to access the house, and, and at a, at a, at a, at a certain time, if they want to make this into an office building, which I'm totally happy with, I think they need to come back and show us how they're gonna make this an office building, and how they're gonna have an approach. It's still all their property, they can do whatever they want with it, but I think to make this clean, for my, for my opinion, to make this clean, we just, we fence it all off, and, and not have any access except through Track Utility's yard.
Okay, so they would have closed that driveway off?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
With the emergency access?
With emergency access on the, on the one, on one piece. 'Cause I'm sure Track Utility could actually allow him access to that property, either through the front or some, some way through that area, not, not disturbing their yard type situation. 'Cause then you're, you know, my concern is if we leave that driveway access there now, we're just adding one more point of contention, and he's, how is he gonna open the gate, does he, you know, how is that access gonna happen? I think for feasibility, I think he just fenced the entire thing off, and, and at this point.
As a, another option, is it, one thing that's been discussed is a little beautification on the outside of the property, but do we have any, do we have any teeth into doing that? I mean, if we, if we approve it, council approves it, who?
So we approve this, this is a conditional use permit.
No, but I'm saying, if we do, what's to say that the improvements to the house are not done?
It would be part of the conditional use permit, it would be part of them, it would be in the requirements to be able to use this as what they're requesting it to be used as.
Code enforcement could...
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes, so what will happen is if you guys take action on this, and you, in favor of this application, the applicant has to come back for a certificate of zoning compliance. At that point, if you want that structure to be converted to an accessory storage building for the site, in conjunction with the outdoor storage, and they would have to go through the building department, we could do that through the certificate of zoning compliance process, and that residential use approved as, as an accessory storage building, and then through that CCC process, and they're working with the building department, they could convert that to a storage building. That's how we would do that, and then if there were any violations, then yes, code enforcement would, would be in, in contact and, and take action on that.
I mean, my preference would be to make it look, you know, give it the curb appeal and make it look nice, instead of a, a big, you know, instead of a fence all across the front of it. I don't know which is easier thing for the city to, to enforce and, and to put through.
I, as I'm sitting here thinking about this, I mean, part of this is, too, they want the expansion, or extension into ten years, and, and part of that is because of the expense of all this, and I'm just thinking, if we leave the house, but require some curb appeal updates, I mean, if that's truly all that's wrong with that, is a few broken windows, then repair it, but it's, that would, I mean, either the five-year sunset, or five years come back and ask again, and see what that area is doing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
If we're gonna pull this apart, ten years scares me a lot.
Yeah.
I, I will be totally honest with you, I, so I, I don't have a problem with the concept of, this, I mean, how fast we're growing is exponential, so I don't have a problem with having a five-year with a check back and a request for, for a time extension, but a ten-year flat doesn't work for me, so...
And I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, but I think if we're only gonna grant him five years, I think we do need to be careful of the cost.
Yeah, I get that.
But I, I'd like to see, I mean, if this is our opportunity to take something that's literally boarded up for no reason other than a broken window.
And, and, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
If getting the windows broke, then maybe it is time to just take it down.
Yeah, so I, I don't know how best to, to make this work, I, I'm trying to look for reasons to make this work all around, and my thought with the easiest was just to fence it off, give him a five-year with a five-year extension, and a potential five-year extension, and at least that way, you have, 'cause the problem is, is they go in and fix this all up and green it all up, who says in two years they just let it all dilapidate again, and so you're stuck with it for three more years? I'm not saying that, but, but you run those risks of, with that, so that's kinda why I, I personally think we need to either, personally, like you said, tear it down or fence it off.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
Well, if, if we propose that they come back and have to make another request, go through another review after five years, and the house is in poor condition, that could be reviewed again at that time?
I would, I would hope that with the income of this, that the house could be maintained.
Either maintained or start the process of slowly taking, taking it down and getting the area ready for the, the next stage of what this whole property's gonna be.
Or converting, I mean, it could be, you know, I believe it can be converted to, to office space.
Oh, and I think it could be too, the question is, is when, and, you know, if, you know, so are you, 'cause I don't want this to be an apartment, or a, a rental, that's not what we're wanting this to do, and the easiest thing to do is to fix it all up and try to, try to rent it as a, a rental, a housing unit, so for me, the, the leverage that I have personally is to fence it off, have them come back, and unfence it with a zoning compliance for a office facility. Does that make sense? Kinda, it forces the hand of either you, you fence it off, or you make it into an office, not a rental, is where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think residential use is a non-starter.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just, just a point of clarification, county records have this as a residential, well, it's commercial, but the home is, I don't even know what they have the home classified anymore, but since no one's lived on the property, in our opinion, the, the single-family use has ceased, so therefore, there is really no use on the property, established on this property. In our code, when a use ceases, then it's, it's no longer there, you have to come back and re-establish a use. That's what part of your purview is tonight, is you're establishing a new use on this site, or expanding use on this property for storage, accessory storage, or a primary use, which is on the adjacent property. So anything that, if that home was to remain, the applicant isn't gonna just be able to fix the house up and then have someone renting the home, because we're not gonna recognize that, that use doesn't exist anymore. They need to come back through the city to do something with that house. That process will either be through a conditional use... That process would either be through a conditional use or through a certificate of zoning compliance, depending on what use they propose for that home to be used for. We don't know at this point. The more, the reason why we were concerned is we just didn't want to have a fire hazard on the property if it was something inside. No one's visiting the site, it's getting vandalized, riffraff happening, crime. Those are the concerns that police and fire and staff have with the way the building looks now. We're just concerned that someone's going to get in there, cause mischief, we're going to have an issue there. Now, all of a sudden, we have a storage yard with all of this other equipment out there, and we just make it worse for everyone, all the other surrounding properties. So that's really what staff is concerned with the building. As far as use, if it stays or goes, we'll leave it to your purview. But right now, we, we're of the opinion it should go based on the current condition of the exterior, not necessarily the interior, because none of us have been inside, which is something to take into consideration.
Repair also need to discuss the back of the lot.
Okay.
We haven't done that yet.
No? I, I, well, I guess at this point.
I, my only, my only issue with the fence is I'm having a hard time visualizing a fence that's going to make it look, I mean, if it's going to be a five-foot chain link fence, what's that going to do?
Well, I think it has to be a screened fence, like a vinyl fence or a wood fence.
Well, I think what's already there is the chain link fence.
Right.
And they're proposing that it be a solid fence. And there, it looks like there's already some landscaping on the trailer court side, but staff is recommending another twenty-five feet back there of landscaping between, you know, on the north side of the fence. So the fence is already a condition to go around the entire perimeter, a solid fence. To replace, and that would replace or be on the north side of that chain link fence. But then the, the question's hand is, do we require the twenty-five feet in which I think the director said, deemed that south part as residential, so that it's required to be a twenty-five foot, uh, landscape?
Madam Chair, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Yearsley about it not being necessary to have manicured landscaping back there. As long as there's the buffer and, and that's, that serves its purpose, um, I, I think that would be sufficient.
I would agree. I would think as long as, I think we put the stipulation in there that you're not parking the large vehicles back there, that it's something that the fence does obscure than, you know, for a certain buffer area, I think.
But my question is.
That's adequate for the five-year limitation on it, yeah.
Is there going to be a requirement of solid fencing in this, this new section that we're discussing? Or is that going to run all the way across the back of the existing Track Utility property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, is, we're just proposing it on the parcel, the, the new parcel.
On the new part, okay.
It's kind of hard to do an off-site improvement.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just wondering what their intention is.
So am I here, new correct, are we saying, are, are we just in favor for a fence if the RV owner, if that's what they're okay with and not the landscape buffer?
Yeah, so my, my condition was, my thought was, is, is if the owner's okay, the adjacent owner's okay with it to have a screened fence, so it's not visible through, like a, a, a wood fence or a vinyl fence type situation. And for the first twenty-five feet, they can't have any equipment or storage greater than six feet tall, so you can't, you won't have a lot of stuff sitting up over the fence within that twenty-five feet.
So those people that live there don't have a wall of.
Trucks.
Stuff.
Yeah.
Of, of wire rolls.
Yeah.
So.
Is the, is it, would, would you, would everybody be then okay with the, uh, what Commissioner Usually is, is proposing? A fence all the way across the front on Franklin, access to the, to the home be, be through the Track Utility yard?
Uh, Ms., uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner, yes, uh, that's fine. And also keep in mind that you'll have that ten-foot landscaping along the entire front that will be maintained. Plus, by, I guess by removing that access and forcing it through Track for that structure, you'd be further keeping it from being, I guess, rented out as a residential use, because who's going to walk through an industrial? Um, plus, uh, I believe staff could put it, or you could, uh, put a condition in there that it does not become a residential use, and then it'd be code enforceable, code enforcement, enforceable if it changed uses. So you'd have the.
And I guess that would maybe mitigate some, if you're having vandalism issues and stuff, I'm, I'm imagining that's why it's boarded up. But if there's no access there, you know, people would just assume that it's part of this and.
So then that, um, as, as far as, um, the two, the sons down there is, I mean, for your, for access for your, your father on that, through Track Utilities, that's a thumbs up.
Because that would mean probably your access is limited to business hours then.
Should we close this up then?
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just one other thought while you deliberate. I appreciate the fact that you don't want to require the twenty-five foot landscape buffer along the south boundary. But this is still a conditional use permit, so if you feel it is appropriate to protect the surrounding properties, you could require the vinyl fence to go across the other property as well, as part of your purview. And the conditional use permit does allow you greater latitude to impose conditions on site that are a little different than what code requires. So you do have the ability, if that's something you feel not requiring it there, but having, protecting that whole south boundary, including the site where they're operating, because you can see in this aerial here, they, they do have trucks and equipment in that section too. So I think you do, it's, it is part of your purview this evening to make that a requirement that, that be entire, along that boundary too. So I don't want you to think that you can't do that, you, you, you do have the capability to do that.
Madam Chair, that is good to know.
Madam Chair, that, that makes sense to me. It doesn't make any sense to me to put a privacy fence up along the, the property in question and, and not put one along the, um, Track Utilities existing property since the RV park runs, runs below all of it.
Okay.
So if the city staff is saying that that's, um, in our purview, I would make that recommendation.
Madam Chair, one, just one more comment, is just keep in mind that, um, the boundary of the existing Track Utility, that, that has been there for fifteen years, twenty years, um, it's, so, that's an existing use, so.
I know.
As opposed to us putting a new use in, so.
I would think if they're coming back in five years, that maybe that's the time to put the teeth into that piece of property. I don't know.
Anyways, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioners, Commissioner Cassinelli.
I move we close the public hearing, uh, for file number H dash two-zero-one-seven dash zero-one-four-one Track Utilities Expansion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H dash twenty-seventeen dash zero-one-four-one Track Utilities Expansion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? How about more discussion?
Um, you know, I.
More thoughts.
I, I, I think this was actually productive. Um, instead of us trying to, uh, put our conditions and, you know, we were able to hear from the applicant what they wanted and try to come up with a, a decent compromise. I, I personally, I think it's actually a, a fairly decent compromise. I, I hope Track Utilities is, is amenable to this as well and, and that you guys can generate some income. So, um.
Okay.
Any other comments before?
Just have a question.
Sure.
For Commissioner Yearsley, could you bring that back up, Bill, the site plan? So are you proposing a fence from, from the landscape buffer to the east edge of that property?
Yes.
With like a rolling gate that allows them to go in and out to the, no, just a complete solid.
Close off that access.
Well, I, I do like the element that it, that it, um, prevents access on that driveway. That's, that is exceptionally important.
Okay, so so far what we're, where we're heading is that the perimeter gets fenced, including everything along the front of Franklin Road, and that driveway access goes away, but that the house can stay.
As an accessory use, yeah.
As an accessory use, no residential which its time has expired anyway as a use. And access would come through Track Utility to that building. And then, uh, the landscape on the south side, uh, we would not require the twenty-five feet, but we would require twenty-five foot, uh, buffer of nothing being stored or parked there that's over six foot tall for twenty-five feet. Okay?
And I guess the, the last question was, is we do have the purview to fence Track Utilities property with secure screening. Is that something that we want to impose at this point? I, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence with that one, it's already been that way for years.
Been that way for fifteen years.
And we're not, the RV, if, if, I would say if the, if the owner of the RV park was here and, and was kind of demanding it then, but it doesn't seem to be a, a big objection.
I think those people that live there, I mean, they've lived there for a long time, they know what's there.
Yeah.
It's, I, I think if they come back in five years and want to extend all of this again, then maybe you get some feedback on that. Landscape.
Agreed.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Yearsley.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I moved to approve file number H twenty-seventeen dash zero-one-four-one as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, with the following modifications. That the south landscaping buffer be removed, but to not allow anything taller, no vehicles or, or anything taller than six feet to be stacked within that twenty-five foot buffer area. That the fencing on the north end of the property be extended to the property line with the landscaping and other amenities on the, on that frontage to be extended to, um, the east boundary property line of the property. The building, the, the house there to be considered not a residential use anymore and be considered an accessory dwelling. And the, uh, the, that the, the applicant has opportunity to come back within five years for another five-year extension.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve H dash twenty-seventeen dash zero-one-four-one Track Utilities with the aforementioned, uh, modifications. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Nope. I have one thing on the agenda that you don't. Mr. Parsons has, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Parsons has asked for a few minutes this evening.
Certainly want to go on to.
Not that bill.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I did want to share some information with you this evening. I wanted to con, at least let you know and confirm with you tonight that, uh, we are trying to get together a joint meeting between you and city council. That hearing date is, the preferred date is February thirteenth at six o'clock. Uh, dinner would be served at five-thirty, so we're looking forward to having you join the council on that evening to just kind of touch bases and see where everyone's at. And then as I get back into the office tomorrow morning, I'll go ahead and order that meeting invite to all of you so that you're aware of that and you can include that as, on your calendar, so we look forward to your attendance on that evening.
The other last question I had, are we doing?
Next one.
Next one, all right.
I asked that today, too.
I figured, yes, I got to get done.
What's that?
Election of officers.
Um.
Are we already?
Now. Commissioner Cassinelli, do you have anything you'd like to make motion?
It's on, how's this?
There you go.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting for December twenty-first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.